I have.
We're good, Shane?
Yeah, we let everyone in the waiting room, yes.
All right, so being Wednesday, April third, twenty twenty four at six thirty P M. Have a quorum of the planning board. I'll call the meeting to order item one. Item two, we have a public hearing this evening. Before reading the pub- public hearing notice, I'll read the governor's notice. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law pursuant to the governor's approval and supplemental budget goal. Temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law have been extended to eight March thirty first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty five. Specifically, this further extension allows public bodies to continue ho- holding meetings remotely without acquiring with the public body physically present at a meeting location. And to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. The language of this extension does not make any subsequent changes to the open meeting law, other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions. Regarding our remote meetings from March thirty first, twenty twenty three, March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely and shall address the questions through the chairs of the board or the host, who's Mr. O'Brien this evening. Additionally, we'd like to note the following. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating participating remotely this evening. Tom Patrick Driscoll, the chair. Mister Michael McDonald, the vice chair. Mister Stephen Geller. Miss Asta Rojas. Mister Edward Ted Haley. And an alternate member, Ms. MJ Spagon. During the meeting, all all votes will be roll call votes. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also also be participating remotely this evening. Mister Robert Ruly, our Community Economic Development Director. Mister Shane O'Brien, town planner. Miss Tristi Jane, the Assistant Town Planner. And Mister Stephen Solari, the Building Commissioner. I don't believe Mister Tansey as well this this evening, correct?
No, great.
At this time, everyone's mics are muted. Boards mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. As items appear on the agenda, projects representatives mics will be unmuted. If this is a public hearing, which allows for public comment, we ask to use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name, your address, and your question. The chair or the host will recognize questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and your address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hands. So, Ms. Robinson, before we open a public hearing, because it's a joint hearing, do you want to? Open the C E D meeting?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's six thirty seven P M. I'd like to call to order. The Community in Economic Development Committee meeting as part of this joint hearing. We do have a full quorum of that committee, including myself, Counselor Chase, and Counselor McKinnon. And I believe that's all I have to state for this part, correct?
Correct. All right, so I'll go to item two. This is a joint hearing, the Community and Economic Development Committee. This is zoning ordinance D F Y twenty four dash zero zero four. It's a central business district, inform base code, amended section three point two table of use regulations. Section four point two table of dimensionary requirements. Section six point one point four for the CBD parking. Section nine point six currently the standards for mixed use in the CBD. Modified as the standards for the Central Business District Standard C B D S. Proposed to remain under review of the planning board. A new section nine point eight for the Central Business District redevelopment, C B D R. That will focus on form-based code under the administrative review in section ten point six site plan approval. So I open that public hearing on the planning board side. You want to just open that on the.
Pat, can I just, can I just know two things? This also includes section ten point six site plan approval and appendices and zoning map changes.
Right, I said ten point six.
Okay, you said a different order, okay.
It it doesn't, it doesn't have the appendices listed in the agenda, but let's.
All right, it has opposed legal.
So I open that public hearing for the planning board. Do you want to open the public hearing for the C E D, Ms. Robinson?
Sure, and first, if if the folks didn't catch at the beginning, I apologize, I'm off screen. I also am having difficulty seeing a lot of stuff on my screen because I have a cracked screen. But so we are officially opening up also on our end for the C E D committee, this portion of the public hearing.
So, Ms. Robinson, my plan was, and if you're okay with it, to turn it over to the C E D department for their presentation on the ordinance?
Absolutely, please proceed.
Mister Rully?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Ms. Robinson. Thank you, and thank you, members of the planning board, as well as the town council and members of the public. I had done this presentation back in March for the town council, but I think it's important to revisit it again, because I know there's members of the public that may or may not have seen it then. And I don't think all of the members of the planning board have seen it. So I just want to go back to, you know, our vision to reality was initiated in response to the comprehensive master plan being adopted in May of twenty twenty two. These are all elements of the comprehensive master plan that were identified to be objectives, priorities, and components that the public wanted to see. So in since June of twenty twenty three, as we've gone through vision, reality, we have been simultaneously addressing all of these issues. We don't look at these issues as a stovepipe. We look at these to be interconnected, and I think that we've done over twenty public meetings. We've done several direct mail pieces. We've done a community workshop. We do community e-newsletters. I've been doing white papers, so I think we've been touching on all of these issues throughout the last year. Understand that some people may not have read, received, attended. So I want to summarize some of this tonight before we get into a discussion with respect to the zoning amendment. I do want to say that the zoning amendment is addressing two priorities. One, that the town is going to be in compliance with the M B T A community's legislation, and then also that we have a mechanism in place to in fact, implement some of those objectives, priorities of the master plan. I would say that current master plan is on the heels of a previous master plan where there was no implementation. And we've seen very little reinvestment or investment in the town since in the last twenty years. But I think this is an opportunity. We're starting to see interest in redevelopment in the town. I will acknowledge that not everyone is on board with that, but hopefully by the end of the evening, people will be in a little better position to understand why we're doing what we're doing. So the the M B T A legislation is chapter forty A, section three A. It is a zoning ordinance that was enacted under the Baker administration. The purpose of that was is to address the state's housing crisis and to concentrate new development within proximity of M B T A assets. Those assets could be rapid transit, commuter transit, bus transit. We are recognized to be a commuter transit community. So there are opportunities for us with respect to the legislation. I am not going to opine on whether legislation is the best piece of written law or not, but those are the rules that we are playing under right now. As part of our revitalization plan, we've identified on this map, five sites. In reality, there are six sites that we think are prime for redevelopment. These are centered around the relocation of the M B T A platform. I want to make a comment now that at no point have we ever said that the town was going to pay for the relocation of the M B T A platform. Suggestions that the M B T A doesn't have any money as just an opinion. The the state has invested over a billion dollars in South Coast Rail. South Coast Rail is not going anywhere. We have been, the manager and I have been in conversations with the our consulting engineers who have talked to the M B T A. There are improvements that are contemplated by the M B T A in the next fiscal year for grade crossing improvements at Broad and Plymouth Street. Those are going to happen regardless of we relocate the platform. But certainly, if we're going to relocate the platform, which the M B T A is okay with, and we've identified ways to fund that, they're going to go ahead with with those grade crossings. The one site that is not identified on this map is a portion of the Spring Street Lot, the southern portion that the M B T owns. We think there's an opportunity to ground lease that for development, and the M B T A is interested in that because that's a source of revenue for them moving forward. So I think it's important to, why there is a compliance requirement as part of the M B T A community's legislation. It's only a requirement on paper. So in Bridgewater's case, the requirement is that we allow for over fourteen hundred units of new housing. The legislation acknowledges that we may not ever meet that fourteen hundred for a number of different reasons, whether that be land availability, infrastructure capacity. It's just that the zoning document shows that under optimal circumstances, that fourteen hundred units of housing could be built. Again, it doesn't require that we build fourteen hundred units of housing. I think that's an important distinction that has to be made. So if in fact that we were not in compliance with the M B T A legislation, there are certain funding programs that we would not be eligible to receive. The most important of those are Mass Works infrastructure and Housing Work infrastructure. I'll speak later to the need for us to make significant investments in both our water supply capacity as well as wastewater. Those investments need to be made regardless if we did any new development. Those are real expenses that are going to come due. Yes, it's true that we do not have to be in compliance until December thirty first of twenty twenty four. However, there are certain funding programs that we would want to apply for and should apply for through the one-stop grant program. That is all of these that are listed here. The expression of interest date is March thirtieth, so that is coming up, that we would have to advise the state that we are going to be applying for any number of these funding opportunities. The full application period opens on May sixth and closes on June fifth. We cannot submit an application unless we know and we can represent truthfully that we are going to be in compliance and have a document before the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. The document that's being discussed tonight has been reviewed by the Mass Attorney General's Office, which is the first step of the approval process. Many of these grant programs have nothing to do with downtown development. As an example, the town is looking to acquire a conservation easement or open space easement for the Hanson Farm. We would be doing that under the M V P program. We won't be able to apply for that funding and meet the deadline unless we are in compliance. There are road improvement projects we are looking at at Flag Road. There are redevelopment opportunities for road improvements in Central Square. We cannot apply for any of those grant programs unless we are on the road to compliance. If we miss that deadline, then we are now pushing this off until May or June of twenty twenty five. I think that's an important distinction, and that's something that has to be acknowledged. So one thing that we've looked at, and we've looked at the six sites, is in terms of what the size of them are, what the existing value is, and what the what we're getting for property tax payments from those properties now, conservatively, what we think we can get in the future. This is assuming a full build out by twenty thirty four. This is calculated on our current tax rate. This is, these are numbers that have not been adjusted for inflation, but as you can see, there's a significant increase in the amount of tax revenue coming to the town if we were to approve the zoning amendment and be in compliance with the M B T A legislation. Not an insignificant amount. We also looked at if we were to establish a downtown improvement fund, which we're allowed to do without the state approval. This is a mechanism where we can generate money based on increased tax revenue to pay for public improvement infrastructure, whether that be water, sewer, roads, parks, open space acquisition. We looked at a twenty-year schedule and looked at seventy percent, which is very conservative in terms of the amount of money that we would access for the diff. We also have an opportunity to look at tax increment financing. I won't get all technical nerdy on that. That would require us to go to the legislature, but this new development is going to pay a lot of bills that the town is facing. I've heard a lot of comments, and I've read some emails over the last few days with respect to, you know, what the benefits of mixed-use development are. What I can say to you after thirty years in this business is that the most difficult thing to finance right now is retail. Retail as a standalone cannot be financed. It's very difficult. So we've been talking about mixed-use development. The benefits of mixed-use development are many. I'm not going to read this to you. I'm happy to share this presentation, but from a funding standpoint, housing is going to carry the funding for new development. Housing puts shoes on the street, feet on the street, people in stores and restaurants. So to think that we could lead with res- with commercial development before residential, it's not going to get funded and it's not going to get built. I did this presentation, I'll share the slide in the end, last February when I first started with the town. Conservatively, if we're building new retail commercial space in Bridgewater, the the rent for that tenant would be a minimum of thirty-three dollars a foot. So you can do the math, thirty-three times five hundred times twelve. There's no small business in Bridgewater that can afford that rent right now. By creating more people and more housing, we're in a position to subsidize what the development of that retail space, commercial space, or professional space could be, so we can create an opportunity for somebody to move into that space at a lower rent number. I think that's very important. I know there's some people from the development community that are going to want to talk tonight that have projects that they're looking for in Bridgewater, but I think it's very important to know that financing in this environment is incredibly difficult. It used to be that a debt service coverage ratio could be something under one. We're now at one point three. It makes it really difficult to finance deals. Interest rates have moved four percent in the last two years. On a fifty million dollar deal, that adds a million dollars of debt service to a project. So I just want to make sure that we're all clear about that. I mean, this is something that I shared with the council last year in February. This is based on a number of authoritative sources in the real estate industry. You can see there, this was last year. Class A retail space, twenty-three dollars triple net. That's their base rent. Triple net is they also have to add on to that insurance, maintenance, and taxes. So that's easily another ten dollars. It could be more than that. Not a, not an easy environment to be developing just office, commercial, or retail in this environment. So with respect to future capital expenses, this is what we anticipate that we're going to need by fiscal year thirty. Sixty-three million dollars for water, another sixty-six for sewer. Somehow that's got to get paid. Two and a half percent is what the maximum tax increase could be. This is going to push borrowing capacity. So looking at a diff, looking at a TIF, looking at increased tax revenue are ways to pay for these expenditures. Gives us an opportunity to borrow against what the future income is. Again, I'm just sharing the facts. I am sharing the reason why I think I was hired to come to Bridgewater to make something happen. I understand that everyone may not be in agreement with that, but that's what all I have for this presentation. Ms. Robinson and Mister Driscoll.
Thank you, Mister Rully. So, Ms. Robinson, do you want to? Does the C E D want to go first with questions for staff about the ordinance?
Sorry, I thought I was unmuting. Pat, why don't you, why don't you all go ahead?
All right, so I'll open it up to planning board questions or comments regarding the ordinance.
Mister Rully, you mentioned that you had identified ways to fund the relocation. Can you describe what those might be?
Those could be developer contributions. Those could be grant money through Mass Works. There's technical assistance money available through South Coast Rail through D O T. Those are all on the table. I I do want to make, and thank you from Mister Gallow for raising that. One other point that I I wanted to make, and I apologize that I didn't say in the presentation. I know that there have been questions with respect to to water and sewer beyond just what the expense is. The town is in the early stages of updating our comprehensive water management plan. We are participating in a regional water study with Old County Planning. We are in discussions with Brockton and some other communities with respect to accessing the surplus of water they have or accessing the desalination plant. The manager and I have have initiated conversations with the city of Taunton. We, with respect to water, we have initiated conversations with the Department of Corrections. Many of you may or may not know, they have a wastewater treatment plant. They are under a consent order that they have to make improvements to that plant. It's, we know that they can accept additional capacity there. We treat wastewater for the university. We've been discussing with them the opportunity to have wastewater from the university be redirected to the prison, so they can treat that. It allows for more capacity for the town. You know, we're in a small window right now with respect. There is still ARPA money available, and there's still federal infrastructure money available. So if we were to be able to reach an agreement to redirect wastewater, we would also be adding water piping along the the right-of-way to get to the prison. So, you know, I I know people don't think we're addressing these things. Quite honestly, I wish these had been addressed before I got here, but we are working on these things. We do acknowledge that these are areas that we need to make improvements, but there are also areas that cost a lot of money, and there are areas that there are grant money and federal money available, but again, any state money and any state money that is tied to federal money is going to require that we be in compliance with the M B T A legislation. So sorry to tack on to your question, Mister McDonald, but I wanted to make sure that I got that out.
No, that's perfect. The more information, the better. The first possible funding source you mentioned was developer contributions. What do you think a? What do you think a developer would want in return for contributing to the relocation?
Well, I think we've, we've, we've talked about this often is that, you know, we are changing, you know, we're increasing density in certain areas for development. I'll use Campus Plaza as an example, that if we are able to allow multi-story mixed-use development in at that thirteen-acre parcel, we've increased the value of that property for that property owner. So it's not unusual in exchange for that for a municipality to ask for some type of mitigation or contribution to public improvements. Because they're receiving that additional density. That's, you know, been done in many communities. Or, you know, it could be done through the spread of new tax, the tax increment financing or the diff. But they are, we've, by increasing that value on that property, that's currency. And, you know, it's not unusual for a community to ask for something back for that.
Now, would this be part of a like a mitigation for a project seeking approval?
Like a mitigation fee kind of thing? That would be one mechanism to do that, yes.
And what would another be?
That we, this just out and out, if you're going to get your project approved, that we're asking for you to, you know, make a contribution to, in this case, the relocation of the train platform.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. You also mentioned, you know, just because we're zoning it for the fourteen hundred housing units, I believe you said, that doesn't mean they're, you know, necessarily going to build it. In my experience, you know, if you zone it, they will build it. And you also spoke about how housing is what developers are looking to build right now over retail. So just, it seems a little at odds to me that, you know, we're going to zone this for giant housing developments and expect them not to get all they can. My experience, developers will take what you give them.
Oh, I mean, a couple of things is that, you know, through the form-based code, we have design requirements that are requiring, in many cases, first floor, commercial, retail, or office. I I think there's been, you know, unfortunately, in the past, you know, there's criticism on forty Bs. We could have been much more stringent on design guidelines for forty Bs. You know, forty Bs really is just dimensional relief, but there's also, you know, caveats, and this has come up in many communities. If a community doesn't have the infrastructure capacity to support fourteen hundred units of housing, you don't have to allow it. And, you know, right now, we do not have the infrastructure capacity to allow fourteen hundred units of housing, no different than approval of forty B. If the town could make the argument that approving a forty B was going to put the health, safety, and welfare of a community at risk because we didn't have access to water and sewer, we don't have to approve it, and that's, that is in the statute. So I don't know that, you know, how much attention was paid to that in approving previous projects, but that is clearly in the statute. And there's a clear acknowledgement from the Healy administration that, you know, Bridgewater isn't the only community that knows that there's no way that we're going to build fourteen hundred units of housing.
Okay, excellent, thank you. One thing you just mentioned in your response was the the first floor commercial. I'm just a little confused with how that meshes with the zero percent retail requirement. Can you explain more how that's? You know, if you're going to have like a first floor commercial requirement, but no actual percentage requirement, how does that, how will that actually math out in reality?
I mean, I I think what we're looking at is there's opportunities within the form-based code area that you could have townhouses, so homeownership. You know, clearly, those would not have brown floor, commercial, retail, or office. But we're also, you know, anticipating, you know, we're requiring a mixed-use building on the street line, and that requires first floor, commercial, a restaurant or or office. So, you know, within the zone, we know that we're going to see some residential development. But if it's on, if it's not on the street, then it may not always have that first floor commercial component.
Okay, so it'd be more of a building-by-building standard than a project standard?
Depending on where the building is sited. If it's, if it's sited on the street, it's going to have to have some type of first floor, commercial, retail, restaurant component.
And would that be the entirety of the first floor or just a portion of it?
At least a portion along the sidewalk.
The portion along the sidewalk, so we could have housing out back behind the commercial.
Correct, there is that possibility, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's that's it for me right now. Thank you.
Yeah, the planning board members? All right, I just, I'll jump in, then maybe somebody else will offer to speak, so. So just like, just, you know, I know we went over most of this form-based code the last hearing we had. Basically, on form-based code, I just have a couple of quick comments. When we first looked at this, and I'm all for the expedited permitting, Bob and Shane, and I, I I know last time what we talked about was we were going to have a planning board member and a Z B A member on the expedited permitting, you know, review team, so to speak, or the technical review committee. And then we found out through questions at a town council meeting through an opinion from the town attorney that non-residents couldn't be on on that committee, so we just sent it back for an internal review. Just looking around like West Bridgewater, for example, has that, the building inspector has the authority to issue a site plan. But why that's going through the review, the thirty-day review, so to speak, that should, in my opinion, come to the planning board for at least comment, you know, comment recommendations back before the permit is issued. It doesn't have to be a public hearing. It can be a public meeting where where the board discusses it, reviews the projects, and makes comments back regarding the checklist and the review process. Is that something you think we could add to the the document?
So philosophically, I don't have any hesitation to allow that. The only caveat I have on that is that, you know, when we submitted the first draft of the ordinance to the Attorney General's Office, they pushed back on anything that was going to be perceived to be a delay in an application going forward. Having said that, I mean, I'm Having said that, I mean, I'm comfortable if, you know, if we're gonna include language that said doing something similar than what we were gonna do, that we will present the application to the planning board for comments, just like we're doing now, non-binding, um, and give the public an opportunity to understand the project. Now, there's the possibility that, uh, the Executive Office Housing Little Communities will accept it, or they'll accept the rest of the document and make a contingent on us changing that language. I'm willing to take that chance because I appreciate, you know, what you're saying, Mr. Driscoll, in terms of, you know, the community having input. I can't guarantee that that is going to survive, but I'm willing to, you know.
Well, I I think we're talking about two different things. Form-based code. I think we have expedited permitting, and I think the planning board should be involved in that thirty-day process, right? It as a public meeting, right? The MBTA overlay stuff. You know, it says right, that should be a site plan through the planning board. Now, I, you know, I'd I'd like to to push the form-based code, the design standards, that type of development, but there's no reason why we can't have, um, full site plan for the MBTA stuff.
Well, I mean, so right now, we're in two situations. We have the site, we have the MBTA communities where the existing platform is. That will only be an overlay district as long as the platform is on the campus. When that moves to Spring Street, that area south of Plymouth Street is now a longer part of the overlay district. I don't have a problem, you know, again, having that review. I just can't predict what the Attorney General or the Executive Office Housing Little Community is going to treat that. In Framingham, they put in a requirement for site plan review. They got a contingent review if they remove the site plan, but I would like to, my goal is to have approval by the council so we can move forward with some of this funding. If we have to come back and amend some of these things because of either the AG's office or the Executive Office Housing Little Communities, we'll make those changes, but I, my goal is to keep this moving forward. So I'm not gonna object to that.
Right, but what I'm saying though is if we, if we, I I'm talking about two different things. So the, in in section nine-point-eight-point-four, What I suggest is there'd be a thirty-day review period, during the thirty-day review, review period by the CED, it also comes to the planning board for a public meeting. Where we discuss the project in a public meeting and provide comments and recommend recommend approval or denial back to your office before the permit is issued. Whether you adopt all those things, you don't, whatever, it's, at least it's on the record. We had a public meeting about it. We provided it, we provided info. Under nine-point-nine-four, under nine-point-nine-four, which is a new section, which has nothing to do with the form-based code, is the MBTA overlay. I think that we should follow site plan review. So it's not expedited permitting. This is just MBTA. This is residential only. They don't have to do any commercial. They don't have to comply with all the form-based code stuff. You know, in 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 town, anything over two units, we require a site plan review.
And that's that area south of Plymouth Street, correct?
Well, there's two areas. You have an overlay district uh, in in CBDR, and you have an overlay, and you have an overlay district in residential D. So I'm saying, if they, if they, if they wanna construct under nine-point-nine, if they wanna construct under nine-point-nine, that's site plan review. If they wanna construct under CBDR form-based code, that's the expedited review through your, through your team. But we, but the planning board still has the opportunity to review the project through a public meeting, not a public hearing, a site plan review.
I'm fine with that. The way you just said it, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and I I sent, I sent that to you in an email to to you and to Shane today because I said I was gonna mention that. So I just, I just think that I like the form-based code, design guidelines, the the process and everything else. I just don't think one office should make all the decisions for the town without town input. I think by having the planning board at least review the project in that thirty-day window at a public meeting, that that keeps it a much open and transparent process to the public, and the planning board gets to put a second set of eyes on it. Maybe pick up something that your office didn't. Um, all right, so that's, I'm jumping around. Um, I also, I also don't like, you know, just my opinion, you know, the council already acted on it. Still, I still think some of the footprints are too big. And I'd like to see, see four stories max.
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, the four stories or the five stories is limited to parcels, a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Uh, right now, there's only one parcel that we have, you know, that is the Campus Plaza, uh, potentially a portion of the MBTA uh, Spring Street Lot would meet that criteria, but those are the only two parcels that meet that criteria. Um, from a development standpoint, you know, for us to just arbitrarily start taking floors off and think that you know, projects are economically viable, that that's not necessarily true. I will defer to the council, um, you know, I wanted six, the council voted five. You would like four, I mean, that's gonna be the council's decision.
Correct. All right, just, and then some other cleanup things. Um, you had, you had mentioned, you know, most of my comments are on the new section, nine-point-nine. It it's pretty open-ended on the MBTA side. I understand there's more flexibility under form-based code. And that letter from Horstley Witten talked about, we shouldn't have a set density in the CBDR because, um, you know, it gives more flexibility and helps us comply with more, more things, but under the MBTA, again, under the MBTA overlay, especially in re- in the residential D area, you know, in those overlay districts, we I, and I think it's just something we took from the the law. It says not less than fifteen units per acre. I think that should be fifteen units per acre, not, not less than. If we, we, we can adopt, according to the law, fifteen units per acre, that's it. But the way it's written, it could be fifty units per acre.
I mean, we, I had, you know, Trissey from my office do an inventory of all the properties located in that area. There's not one parcel that is over a half an acre. And most of the parcels are a quarter acre or less. So the the idea that A, you know, we're gonna see fifteen units an acre is not gonna happen. Secondly, um, the fact that, you know, in this period, somebody's gonna be able to put an assemblage together because we have multiple property owners. Uh, I think there's only two parcels that are contiguous with the same property owner, and that still didn't make an acre. I mean, I I don't foresee that. Uh, that is only an overlay district, as I said previously, until the platform is moved. But I I'm not, I mean, a- again, I will defer to, uh, if we want to include that, I just don't wanna make any representation that it's gonna pass muster with the Attorney General's Office.
Well, it's just, just the way it's written right now. It says in the law says that the district can't be less than fifteen years break, but it can be fifteen years break. So just to keep it clean, why wouldn't we just say fifteen units per acre?
That's fine. I'm, I don't have a problem with that with respect to the CBDR. I mean, the C, the D.
All right, my, one of my two, two last quick, three last quick comments, um. And you, you had put something in here already that said about the design standards should follow the flex zone. I just think that we should clean that up so it matches up. We call it flex frontage. And there, there's a couple of sections of design standards and material types. I just think we should say flex frontage and and identify those areas of architectural details we want the MBTA to follow. Um, and one thing I talked to you and Shane about is just on the MBTA side, not the form-based code, you know, so so in a big, in a big section of the CBDR, you can do MBTA housing, or you can do form-based code. And I'm just trying to make the form-based code more attractive that you spent all this time on, to have that commercial component and everything else. You know, I I see a lot of towns are, and the MBTA law says that, that we could have, um, ten percent of the units affordable. I know we disagree on that right now, but it's just something that I'd like, you know.
And again, I mean, you know, I don't, and first of all, to make that requirement is exclusionary zoning. Wellesley's plan got rejected because they had that. I am not suggesting that we can't come back and revisit that, but the way that the law is written, it states that you can have ten, no more than twenty percent affordable housing. If it is made available to people that are making in excess of eighty percent of area median income, that's not affordable housing. You're considered moderate income if you're between sixty and eighty percent of AMI. If you're between forty and sixty, you're considered low income. So that language in the state statute doesn't even make sense because if you're saying, okay, I I want that to be available to people making eighty, more than eighty percent of AMI, that's market rate housing.
Right, but, and I agree with that, but that's not something we can control, but what we can control.
Why would we have it in there? I mean, I I think that.
Because, because, because it keeps us, it keeps our SHI numbers at above ten percent.
Though, because people that are over eighty percent AMI are not gonna be qualified, you know.
But it, but, but the unit, but the unit counts as an affordable unit.
But they're not affordable units, so those are not gonna be monitored units. I mean, to be considered part of the ten percent, those have to be monitored units, and they have to be deed restricted, and these, you're gonna deed restrict it to somebody that's making eighty percent of AMI. It doesn't qualify for, for a monitor. I mean, I, I'm not saying we can't revisit it.
I I think we disagree with that. We've had a number of the forty Bs in town that deed restricted with eighty percent AMI.
And they have a. Eighty percent. This says more than eighty percent AMI. AMI, it, for deed restricted, it has to be sixty to eighty. The, the statute specifically says making more than eighty percent of AMI. Now, I'm, I'm not suggesting it's worded correctly. I'm just saying that's how it's written now.
All right, and then the last comment I have, and I think I spoke to Shane about this earlier, Appendix A and Appendix C. There was a zoning change. I brought this up before, that we improved the zoning on ninety-six Main Street, for example. And the maps we've seen revert back to the old zoning line, should actually.
And I think they corrected that this afternoon. I mean, you know, again, I know that, you know, these are locust maps, these aren't specific maps, but we've made that amendment to make sure that that ninety-six Main Street, that zone line goes back to the rear of the property line.
The issue they had there is if they wanted to develop it, they could only go thirty feet into residential D. And that put restrictions on that lot, and I just, I wanna make sure that that's captured so they don't have an issue.
Yep.
That is correct.
All right, well, those are my comments. Other board comments?
I, I would just echo everything Pat said, especially with the uh, the building height. Uh, I don't believe four stories would be an arbitrary restriction, Mr. Rully. I believe every public comment I've received is advocated for that. I I, you know, that's, that's what people wanna see.
Yeah, I, and again, you know, I have the good fortune of not having to make that decision. I mean, I will advocate, I advocated for the six. In the conversations that I've had with developers, I'll advocate for the five. Um, I don't know if you were at the meeting we had early summer, Mr. McDonald, where we had two independent real estate professionals come in and talk about development economics and what it costs and what the uses are, but again, at the end of the day, that is gonna be a decision of the council.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Okay, speaking of council, um.
Why don't, why don't you guys take it over?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it sounds like, uh, thank you to the, the planning board, um, for your comments and your feedback. Um, I'm gonna defer to my, my two colleagues here, um, Counselor Chase, Counselor McKinnon. Do you have any questions to start off before I I dig in?
You can go first, Chase. I don't have much.
Uh, sure. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Susie. Uh, I don't know that I have any particular question because I know that um, from the standpoint of what we've already done at the council over a, a long period of time, I, I, I think we have, uh, in my opinion, certainly adequate familiarity with the proposal as it stands. And obviously, we have been tracking the discussion and the, uh, proposed amendments that have, uh, come about more recently. Um, it is true that at the council level, uh, we did recently, uh, vote to reduce the maximum height from six stories as initially proposed in the ordinance, uh, to five stories. Um, I indicated at the time, uh, I believe both at the council level and, uh, in the Community and Economic Development Committee, um, that is a personal matter. Uh, I was not opposed to six stories. Uh, I remain not opposed to six stories. At the council, um, uh, Counselor McKinnon actually, uh, made the motion to uh, as, as a, a matter of, uh, consensus building um, to reduce that maximum height to five. And, uh, the council adopted that, uh, quite readily, uh, because in fact, we did agree that it was a matter of some compromise, and it, it appeared to us to be um, a reasonable, uh, change to make. Uh, just on that point, I think that it is, it is very important that we not foreclose on the opportunity that we don't even yet know will exist. We don't know what any developer may propose. Um, and on that basis, that was the primary reason for which I was reluctant to um, eliminate the potential for a number of stories above four. Um, nonetheless, I'm hopeful that, uh, reducing it to five, as the council has done, uh, would not discourage any potential, uh, developer's plan. Uh, obviously, and as, uh, Mr. Rully has just alluded, uh, developer needs to ensure, uh, economic viability of his plan. Uh, we certainly went through many discussions of that nature with the, um, uh, with the development now actually about to take place across the street from Campus Plaza. Uh, and I think that, uh, in that particular case, I think there were a lot of very um, very prudent, a lot of very prudent decisions were made in order to ensure that the developer would have the, uh, potential economic benefit that he needs in order to uh, move ahead with that development at, uh, the former Perkins site. Um, so that's my only comment with respect to the, the height issue. Um, I understand the comments that were made, uh, earlier in the discussion between um, members of the planning board and Mr. Rully with respect to um, uh, you know, number of units per acre and uh, the need for potential site plan review with respect to, uh, section nine-point-nine. Uh, I, uh, certainly that appears to be, uh, reasonable, and I think that uh, Mr. Rully has, uh, appropriately, uh, expressed, uh, his willingness to, uh, uh, consider those kinds of modifications. So I, I frankly think we're we are realizing and will continue to realize more cooperation here, uh, than, uh, than disagreement. I I think we're in the very final stretches of approval of this plan, and I think that that will be extraordinarily beneficial for the town of Bridgewater and its citizens. That's all I have.
Thank you, Fred. Brad?
So I just got one question for Bob. Even if we don't move the train station, this is where the point-five circle is gonna be, no matter what. Is that correct? For the MBTA?
Yeah, if, we can be in compliance if we do not move the platform. However, you know, as part of a broader economic revitalization strategy, we see a greater benefit of moving the platform, concentrating that areas where we're gonna see redevelopment that will increase, uh, public transportation. And, you know, we've never said that this, that we talked about this being transit-oriented development. We're not under any illusion that suddenly a thousand people a day are gonna be taking the train. But what we do see is an opportunity to have what we call micro-transit and intermodal transit that the university right now has a series of small buses. The senior center has a small bus that circulation within town that people could get on a bus at a central location at the Spring Street Lot uh, is going to improve transportation options and traffic options in the downtown area. Also, in conversations with Brockton Area Transit, improved weekend and night bus transportation, particularly, you know, for some of the international students we have and people just going back and forth to Brockton. A hundred riders a day, paying to park, paying a higher fare where the platform is now is just not economically feasible and it's not working.
Yeah. Uh, one more question, now that I look out my window and see the Spring Street parking lot. What section of the parking lot are we talking about being the sixth site? What do you, what do you mean when you say the south part of the parking lot? Are you talking closer to eighteen, or are you talking right next to my window on Spring Street or?
No, I mean, I, we're, we're thinking that, that area of the parking lot closest to Plymouth Street.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions for my colleague? Hey, any other questions from my colleagues?
No.
Okay, um, um, thank you, everyone, for the, for the questions and um. And apologies in advance to everyone on this call, but I'm gonna have a lot of things that I want to go through. Um, and hopefully, Mr. Ruly, um, and other members of your team, I'm also not aware if you have anyone. On the phone here as well from your um, your, uh, you know, third party partners who can answer some of the questions. But I do want to go through the red line markups. Uh, one of the challenges we have is that we are supposedly looking at the February twentieth version with red lines. Um, and I know that there have been subsequent conversations after that fact, so there is. I understand that there's probably another version of this document that exists that has been updated that this public has not seen yet. Um, so bear with me if we, if there's, if some things have already been captured. Um, specifically, page seven, nine point six point seven, under the CBDS. Uh, for mixed income housing and public improvements, there's a strike through on any density bonus for commercial units. Would require payment for public infrastructure improvements, the amount to be negotiated. Uh, there's a comment, staff suggestion, this language should be deleted per the Attorney General's comments under Koontz versus Saint John's Water Management District. One thirty-three S C, so there's like some kind of case here, right? Monetary exactions as a condition of a land use permit must have essential nexus. And rough proportionality to the proposed development. So I am a highly intelligent person, break that down for me, please.
That's not to suggest we couldn't meet that test, uh, what it's suggesting is that. Uh, if we were to say to a property owner. That it's currently zoned for four stories, if you give us five stories. Either give us affordable housing units or give us a cash contribution. You would have to be able to make a straight line correlation that whatever revenue you receive for that extra density. Was solely for a public purpose, um, not suggesting we couldn't make that argument, but the Attorney General's office is saying. You probably don't want to go, there's other ways to do this. Um, so that nexus means that, you know, you would specifically have to have. Uh, as a document that says we're getting extra density, we're not giving you affordable units. But we're gonna give you a con- cash contribution, and that is gonna go to improvements to your public water supply.
Susie, could I just, could I jump in and ask a question on that same thing, if you don't mind?
Yeah, of course.
So I'm probably more of a statement than a question, so I'm glad to see it struck, because I never knew what it meant anyway. Like why, you know, I could see. It says any density bonuses for commercial units, it doesn't talk about residential units at all, just doesn't, why would we want to penalize? Somebody for trying to build more commercial, when that's really what we want to see more of downtown and not more residential. So, I mean, I, regardless of what the case law says or anything. I'm happy that's gone, because I wouldn't want to penalize a developer or ask for contributions for uh more commercial.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, that's an opinion on yours, I mean, our, our intention to include that and other municipalities have done it. Is because they're trying to address the the shortage of housing, um, and and that's why it was couched. Just with respect to housing units, um, you know, Boston has a program where, you know, if you don't want to give it to them. Uh, on a site downtown, you're gonna give it to a site somewhere else, so, I mean, it was, you know, something that. You know, in my professional experience, we've done in the past, um, I respect the Attorney General's office saying. It's probably a slippery slope to go down and we deleted it.
Oh, but we never had a density requirement for commercial, so what would a bonus be?
The bonus would be in the case of that we're giving them additional height, which is gone away.
Yeah, so that was, uh, that leads to my next question, the going away part, um. So that is news to me based on multiple previous conversations we had prior. Um, both publicly as well as just, you know, individually around. Um, we had specifically talked about including the density bonus for ten percent to be income restricted in the CBD R.
But I mean, again, I don't want me to interrupt you, Ms. Robinson, I mean, what, the document, the red line document and the clean document. Since the last town council meeting, that, th- those documents haven't changed, so the red line. In the clean document relate back to each other. What the, what the Attorney General is saying is, you don't have the ability because the legislation. Does not allow for you to have affordable units, you cannot make that requirement. Mr. Driscoll raised that previously, the way that the law reads is that. They're defining affordable to be people that are making over eighty percent. Of area median income, by HUD's definition, that is not affordable. Anyone over eighty percent of AMI is not considered moderate income or not considered low income.
So, I I, yeah, I definitely heard you earlier, so I guess the part that's a little confusing for me. And if you, and if we even see it, you know, we see it in the A, um, the AGO's statements around, um. Milton, right? We see it overall is the way that this legislation has been benched, we've seen it even in the reflection of our own. Vision to Reality website, we have talked about this entire initiative is to increase. More availability of affordable housing.
We don't use the word affordable, we use mixed income.
And so, no, the word affordable has been used very specifically. We, like I said, it's, but I pointed this out in several conversations in the past, and like I said, the Attorney General's office has been using the word affordable as well. I think what's really concerning is just making sure that we're really clear on like what the. And I know that you did the white paper, I'm not saying that, you know, about that, it's just sort of the, you know, we have talked about like this is due to a housing crisis. But we're also saying that, well, we're not, it, this isn't about affordable housing, so. You know, the reason why we said it would be great if we have this opportunity. To make sure that there's some level of restricted income as a density bonus, right? Which we originally intended was truly do in the spirit of being able to. Have units available for those who cannot, who won't be able to afford the rents, right? That, um, so. I I just want to put that out there, that I think that that's one thing that's been really troubling from the beginning of this. In the way that it's been benched to the, just, you know, public at large, as well as the way we've, we've communicated it to the community. And I get it if the legislation doesn't, you know. Takes that piece away, but there has been a lot of confusion on that front for sure.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you, I mean, and I I a hundred percent do agree with you, I think that. Um, there is a lot of problems with the legislation that we're not in a, gonna be able to change before we meet the compliance requirements. You know, another example I'll give you, when, when I first got here, the, you know, there was, they were saying that. We want mixed income hu- we want mixed use projects, but you can't count that housing towards your, your goals, and that got changed. I mean, I absolutely a thousand percent agree with you that, you know, there's a missed opportunity here by not carving out. Opportunities to have income restricted housing as part of these approval processes, whether. That's through additional density or, you know, dimensional relief, but. I mean, again, we tried and the AG kicked it out.
So, so, Mr. Robinson and Mr. Ruly, I just look at the lobby, the lobby, Mr. Ruly is correct, it does say not less than eighty percent. But the definition of affordable housing, after it says the eighty percent, it says it may be included in the S H I. So, my whole thing is, is. Is that if, if we can incorporate ten percent of these projects downtown, so these projects are neutral against our S H I. Because every unit we bring on, we're gonna start to fall further behind in the S H I numbers, which. Which, once we get below that ten percent, and we're not far above it, we're only like a ten point five, ten point six, ten point seven, somewhere in that range. We open ourselves up for another big forty B, because once we're below ten percent, there's nothing that we can, you know, they, they can then apply for them and we can't deny it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just, can I just respond to that, Mr. Driscoll? I mean, first of all, I I don't know what the monitoring requirements are. I mean, again, I think we've acknowledged that there's significant deficiencies in the way that the legislation is written. I don't know by definition that people over eighty percent can be included in that. calculation on ten percent, but at the same time, you know, I. There's a sixty-page design guideline for forty B projects that, you know, doesn't say that. You know, whatever somebody presents to you, you have to accept that. And there are provisions within the legislation that, you know, similar to what we're doing with MBTA communities. If you don't have sufficient water sewer capacity, infrastructure capacity, you're not obligated to accept those, so. You know, I'm not, you know, if we're saying that we're gonna say people that over eighty percent of AMI are gonna help us meet the ten percent. Because we don't want to have people that really need help with housing.
It's, it's not, it's not the people, it's the unit, the unit is what counts.
They're throwing out the baby with the bathwater that, you know, and again, it's. I'm just looking at, you know, what other communities have tried to put forward and what's been rejected. Um, I don't disagree with Ms. Robinson, I I am a strong advocate for mixed income housing. I have been in my entire professional life. I included this because I was hoping that we could get, this was a smart way to do something, and the fact that. You know, the state sees otherwise is is disappointing, but again, you know, these aren't my rules.
Wait, I'm sorry, you included what?
I'm the one that included the, the density bonuses for either a cash contribution or affordable units.
I I actually believe that had been derived from original feedback that we were looking for. For some kind of provision in there and it was added afterwards, so.
I'll, I'll disagree.
I don't believe it was in the original proposal.
Because I put it forward. But I, I.
Um, we can, we can move on, um. Thank you for acknowledging around the development plan review process, I think that that is a sensible approach. Um, one of the things I was hoping you can help us. Kind of, hopefully maybe dispel some, some anxiety or concerns from the community, is definitely about commercial. Um, so we, you know, we as counselors, the planning board, um, have received a lot of feedback. In terms of what is the percentage of commercial, right? And I think the way that this is written doesn't necessarily delineate a percentage, because it will really depend on the building. From, from what we're understanding, the way it's written and from what you've said, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I just want to make that clear to folks, because, um, you know, there is that aspect out there that we have said, okay. We are actually executing on our master plan. And the MBTA community's legislation has given us an opportunity to jumpstart that. So it was almost sort of like, maybe taking something that wasn't ideal from a legislative standpoint in terms of the MBTA. MBTA community's law, but giving us a really good excuse, and then also some state funding to help us go investigate. This case that we can build for this future plan. Um, but we still always wanted to execute on our master plan. So as we think about that, um, you know, of course, with the intent of wanting to increase our commercial base, right? Um. There has been understanding from many folks in the community that commercial requirements were around thirty percent prior. And now with this new sale of the Perkins property, um, folks have been hearing that it's much, much lower. Uh, you know, we have, I think consistently shared the message that retail has changed quite a bit. But then there's also an aspect of how people are shifting in the way they're living. They're moving out further into communities like ours, and they're actually looking for more commercial services. Whether it's like another doctor's office to daycare, to, to more places to eat, right, more mom and pop restaurants. So, if there's anything you can help shed light in terms of, you know, again, we can't. Anticipate the exact percentage of what commercial will be, right? But in terms of like, what is the spirit and the intent in this form-based code to ensure that we're really. Trying to do as much as we can to encourage more commercial um presence to happen in this development.
Yeah, so, so thank you for that, that question, so the thirty percent requirement was introduced in two thousand nineteen. Don't know why, no rationale behind it, other than aspirational, uh, COVID happened in twenty twenty. Uh, we've seen no significant commercial or retail expansion in Bridgewater, actually, we've seen none. We've probably seen a decline, um. I I shared a slide earlier on mixed use development, uh, we've talked about what we see the potential. For federal realty site at Campus Plaza, clearly. More commercial retail restaurant opportunities are something that we want to see. That is driven by the amount of housing you have in proximity to that, and no one is going to. Spend the money to build a doctor's office or a restaurant without the surrounding support of of residential. I mean, I've heard this oftentimes from people that just don't want to see new development, I appreciate that's their opinion. That's not how the real world works with respect to real estate development, you need people on the sidewalk. And so with respect to the Perkins site, if we had required thirty percent commercial, we would be. Probably not seeing that building built and seeing empty commercial space. They've redesigned that project, I think it's a great project, and we've got other. Projects that we are seeing coming, I think we can get back to a higher number, but we're not there yet, if. If, if you speak to any real estate developer, local, regional, national, no one is betting on. Retail and commercial only right now, it's just, there's, there's no way to finance that. Uh, the change in interest rates, as I mentioned earlier, the debt service coverage ratios numbers. The, the amount of equity that a private developer has to put into a project do not support, because the tenants that. If it's a specialty shop, it's a local business, they're not credit tenants. There are not, they, those are not tenants that a, a bank is gonna say, I'm comfortable that they're gonna be around for a year or two years. And also, to build that space independent of any other income source, is gonna require that they spend. Thirty-three dollars a foot to rent that space, they can't afford to do that. I mean, it's just, the economics aren't there, um, I hope that we get there and I think we're going to get there. And I hope that as, you know, the tide rises, the boats rise with it. But we will see more commercial space when we see more housing downtown.
Great, thank you for addressing that, Bob. Um, my next, my next piece is I just want to make sure fully understanding nine point nine about the overlay district for the MBTA. So if I understand correctly from, um, from earlier in this conversation, there will. This is under the assumption, of course, that the train station stays where it is. And then that overlay district would be only residential?
The way that it's known now, yes.
Okay, and then since there's an overlap, the other part would be under formed.
Well, okay, just for clarification, Su- Su- Susie and Bob. So there's two overlay districts, the, there's one in residential D. And there's one that overlays the form-based code, so Bob, form-based code. Or commercial uses, or mixed use, or residential could go in the overlay in the CBD R, correct?
That's correct, yeah, I, I thank you for clarifying that. Initially, when we submitted our zoning amendment to the Attorney General's office. We did it with the expectation that we were moving the platform. And they came back and said, but you haven't moved it yet, so we needed to go back and include. That CBD D, that area south of Plymouth Street. When and if the platform is moved, that overlay district goes away, that just goes back. That reverts back to what the existing zoning is, it's not subject to any of the MBTA community requirements. It's whatever that existing zoning is, or if there's an amendment made to it.
Okay. Is there a reason why we wouldn't put? This section up earlier in this document, or is this the right place for it?
I think it's the right place for it, I mean, we talk about the priority, there's two priorities. You know, the, the central square, the CBDS, which we're not proposing. New development, I mean, we're, we're seeing some infill development, but, you know, we're not advocating tearing buildings down. I mean, the planning board still has, you know, jurisdiction, if you would, over that. We're really looking at those areas, the CBD R, where we have the underutilized sites for redevelopment. Um, again, we didn't even want to include the Plymouth Street section, because, you know, again, our anticipation is that. The community isn't served by having the platform where it is. Um, so, I mean, I, you know, we can move it within the document, but I don't think it makes. Any significant difference in terms of, um. The end result, i- if you would, but, I mean, I, I think now it's. I would just say that it's not a priority, because we don't anticipate much happening there, just because of. The way, the size of the lots and what the current uses are, and the limitations on what can be done there.
Okay, and sorry. Okay, and sorry if this is a stupid question, but I mean, does this piece even belong? I I mean, where the train station is today, is that? Is that considered part of the Central Business District?
No, it's not.
So does it even make sense to be in this document because of the fact that this entire zoning ordinance is around the Central Business District?
It's only in the document because the Attorney General told us we had to put it in. And that's why it wasn't in initially, and that, you know, when we re-advertise this and why we're back here tonight. It's because we had to put it back in, um, that's the only reason that it's in because as of today. The platform is where it is. Um, despite our efforts and conversations and and moving it, it is where it is, so they required that we put it. You know, we have to include this, and that's why it was, you know, I know that it seemed nefarious that we were putting it back in. There's no advantage to what we're doing by putting this back in.
Right, no, it wasn't nefarious, it just wasn't.
No, I I didn't mean that you were suggesting that, it was just, you know, I know that the public, you know, might have felt like, well, this was a last-minute game changer. It it really doesn't, we don't anticipate seeing a lot of things happening there.
So related to the train station, then, uh, we're still pursuing potentially moving it or no?
We are, absolutely we are.
Okay, so then in which case we would have to go back and redo this ordinance?
No, the ordinance has the two overlays, uh, as Pat mentioned, so, you know, we've covered ourselves, I mean. We have the, both overlays are in there, the, the only.
Oh, right. Because the other form-based code overlay includes a proposed different location for the train station.
And Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, but that, even if we wanted to keep that residential D there. You could keep that there even if the train moves because. You only have to have twenty percent of the the district within a half mile, so that even if it fell outside of the district, it would still be fine.
Okay, gotcha. Um, thank you very much, that's very helpful on the document, so I have a couple of questions overall that we've talked about, just. In terms of like, we've got a lot of big contingencies, right, so, um. Wastewater, uh, several. Several council meetings ago, you actually did give us an update about. You know, the the proposed redirection from BSU. Um, to the prison. But then, um, from what I understood, the prison is waiting on state funding to actually upgrade their capacity. To to just update their their system because of, like, everything else, everything's old and needs to be updated, is that accurate still?
No, um, so. Mister Dunn and I have had conversa- I've had several conversations with the Department of Corrections, he and I had one. A couple of weeks ago, so. Uh, the prison is under a consent order that they have to upgrade their plant. Uh, and we knew that, and, uh. We began this conversation last calendar year. If that's in fact is what they're going to do, can those upgrades take into consideration a diff- additional flow? Uh, the existing design of their wastewater treatment plant, and we've done the calculations. Uh, we've given them the flow numbers from the entire university, uh, capacity. That existing plant can. Take the additional flow, uh, that the university would be sending to them and still have remaining capacity. Um, so as they're looking, they have to get their funding through DCAM. The town has the ability to look at federal funding, so our conversation is can we jointly look at this? And look at if there was an opportunity to expand the plant and bring some of those residential neighborhoods. That exists south of BSU's campus to the prison. That would create additional opportunities, so that is ongoing right now, the. The Department of Corrections has put out an RFP RFQ, they have a consultant that is doing that preliminary engineering. We are in conversation with them as they go through that process. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the prison gets their water through the city of Taunton. Um, you know, we're initiating conversation, is there an opportunity for us to potentially get water from the city of Taun? But conversations about the wastewater are very active and. Have been, uh, very promising from my standpoint in terms of, you know, having a solution. That, cause we're not gonna be able to get a dis- an increase in our discharge permit for our existing plant. Um, so taking almost a third of the capacity that's treated at the plant today. Offline and sending this somewhere else creates opportunities for us. But also with respect to some of this potential new development, there's technologies out there that. There are what we call package plants that there could be opportunities to treat wastewater on site, but. We're much farther along in our conversations with the Department of Corrections than some might be aware of.
Gotcha, and any general sense of timing?
Government, um, I mean, I I think that will, I would think by the first of the year. We're going to have a pretty good understanding of which direction we're going. Uh, their consultant just came online, they're probably gonna need six months to complete their study. And once that's done, we'll be able to have a meaningful conversation on funding and what the opportunities are. And then you're probably looking at another eighteen to two years on construction. Which, you know, again, as we look at redevelopment of the downtown area, I mean, we have some projects that are going now, but. You know, some of the larger projects are probably, you know, five years out, so the timing, you know, it. Isn't optimal, but it's good.
Okay, so based on that, back of the, back of the envelope kind of math, we're talking about potentially three years.
I I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, okay, um. And then, I think it would be really helpful too, and by the way, so this is sort of like, I know we've talked about some things, but. It seems like, of course, we can make some progress in a couple of months. So interested in hearing any kind of update about traffic, the traffics, the Route Eighteen corridor study. And how that affects us and.
Sure, so, um. As you know, you and your fellow council members approved a resolution last month. Uh, for the town to look at bringing on an engineering firm to look at. Uh, traffic and pedestrian improvements in the central square area. Uh, we have a meeting with the Downtown Committee tomorrow morning. I have an RFP ready to go for, uh, engineering firms to come in and give us proposals. Uh, I think that is a very positive step that the council took, that acknowledging we need to look at that. Any bottlenecks, any traffic congestion issues that we have. All begin and end in that central square area, the convergence of Broad Street, Main Street. Plymouth Street and and coming down from from Bedford Street, so I think that, and again. Looking at funding sources, Mass Works, there's money available, Safe Streets, Schools, there's money available. So we wanna make sure we're in a position to access all those funds, but. I'm super optimistic that, you know, getting an RFP out, we've had, and I've had some conversations with engineering firms, I mean. People see the challenge, I mean, this is really an engineering feat that is gonna have to happen, but it can be done.
Cause I think, you know, certainly related to traffic as well as the train station move, um, the biggest, some of the biggest concerns. Are certainly like what will be that impact on local businesses and especially residents right in that area. And then, of course, just overall traffic delay.
Sure.
Everything from noise to, yeah, backups and so.
But I mean, I think that, and I don't mean to interrupt you, if you, if I cut you off, I apologize.
Well, I think it's just a matter of, again, you know, so. The everyday person, we are not engineers, we are not traffic study experts. We, you know, it's like, we can envision the Roach Brothers Plaza and we can envision Broad Street and Spring Street, and it's sort of like. I I think anything that we can do to help folks literally envision. That that area would not look the same, but what would stay, you know, because if we think about. You know, Route Eighteen, it already being a bottleneck and we're not benefiting from it, right, so it's just. We we could use more commercial business for sure, but with more residents, more commercial, um. Of course, it's a natural concern about that being a bottleneck, but. I would like to think, and we all believe in this, is like, as we reimagine this space. Of course, we're gonna take into account roadways and traffic flow and whatever reconfigurations need to be made. But at the same time, we also know that the train station is right there as well, both for convenient reasons, but. In also a very realistic world, it will literally and figuratively hold some traffic flow up. So I think any, you know, so it's sort of like a broad maybe suggestion as well as. You know, any insight you can share now to help alleviate concerns around that, I think would be really appreciated.
Yeah, so, and thank you, I mean, uh, you know, I think that the results of the. Eighteen corridor study were like, traffic is really bad right now, I mean, all our intersections were enough. Um, so, I mean, that's before we've done anything. I I think that the reconfiguration of those intersections at Central Square. Is gonna go a long way to improving circulation, uh. Looking at whether or not one lane around the town green is going to slow traffic down, but at the same time improve flow. Um, that needs to be vetted, I mean, I've seen it work before. Uh, but, you know, certainly, we're looking to make this a more walkable community, there are a number of pedestrian. Improvements that we need to make in terms of sidewalks, uh, looking at complete streets, another opportunity to get funding. Um, I've heard this at meetings, you know, we've had at the senior center. All of those things require funding and we're trying to identify as many funding sources as we can, but. If you're able to improve public transportation, you're able to improve circulation by micro-transit. That all li- makes some of the local traffic issues go away. But if we're acknowledging that most of the traffic we have now coming through this corridor is driving through town, um. You know, we've gotta fix that somehow, and and that's something that we're definitely concentrating on, but. I don't wanna suggest that, well, we're just gonna make it worse if we move more people downtown. You know, hopefully those people aren't gonna drive around, they're gonna walk. And, you know, we want them to walk and we want them to be able to not drive to, you know, if I lived. On Broad Street now and I wanted to take the train, I either have to drive to Brockton or I have to drive to the campus because. Most people don't feel like they wanna walk that, so we wanna make it more transit-oriented friendly, um, yeah. That's aspirational, but I think we're working towards that and it's been proven to work in other communities. Um, but it's a process and it costs money to do that, um, so. I appreciate people's, is what people see now in perception is reality for people now, and I acknowledge that, but. I'm somebody that walks around town a lot, and it's an Olympic sport trying to cross the street sometimes and. You know, we're, we are definitely acknowledging we have to improve that. Bridgewater is a very walkable community that just doesn't feel like a walkable community. So pedestrian safety is as important as traffic flow for us right now.
Yep, and Bob, actually, you just teed me up for my final question before we allow other folks to interrogate you. Um, eh, so it is related to funding, you know, we've definitely put some messages out there and, you know, having come from a. A retail background myself, um, some years ago. There definitely were a lot of development projects where developers literally do pay for some roadway improvements. You know, other things that we can't mandate in this form-based code, but that is literally part of the negotiation, right? Um, I think that, you know, one of the big concerns that we've heard from the community is definitely around the train station move. Um, you know, aside from traffic, aside from any kind of noise, et cetera. There is, um, you know, it was flagged, um, thankful to a community member, Donna Jewell, who had put, pulled some folks together. Um, to give some very specific feedback. You know, one of the things that was raised is some concern about, um, contamination mitigation that the MBTA was supposed to do. Some years ago, so that was one thing that, you know, may need to be investigated. The other piece too is like, that's a very, very costly move and knowing that. You know, we continue to read in the headlines that the state is tied up, we're all tied on budget, right, nobody's got money. We don't have money for our schools, we don't have money for our, you know, all the infrastructure projects we want to do, so. At the same time, you know, knowing we've got some big contingencies, you know, how do we keep this attractive for developers? And then yet not put the cost burden on taxpayers.
Yeah, and and I I've said often, I mean, a couple of things is that I was unaware. Of, you know, concerns around contamination until I read your meeting notes. Uh, we researched that today, um, there is no, so. MBTA, when they acquired the property and were making improvements to South Coast Rail. Are required to do both a MIPA and a NEPA, such mass environmental protection as well as national because they have federal money. Um, there are no documented. Reports of any contamination on the Spring Street Lot. Uh, previously, historically, there had been a propane company there, but there was no evidence of any kind of contamination. They actually ironically moved to a superfund site, uh, I know that. Uh, Michael reached out to a zoo just, you know, just check EPA, so I I don't know what. The suggestions are that that's a contaminated site, what I can tell you in my experience is. That the MBTA would have never acquired a contaminated site without doing remediation first. Um, this, they just don't ever wanna accept that liability. I understand also, you know, the financial challenges. That the MBTA has with respect to what's happening in Boston. As I said earlier, they've invested over a billion dollars in South Coast Rail. Uh, they're doing it in New Bedford, they did in Freetown, they're doing it at Fall River, so that commuter rail is is almost kind of the future. For the success of the MBTA, the cost to move the platform is somewhere, I mean, we're not talking about stations. It's, you know, on the high side, it's nine million dollars, on the low side, it's seven, um. In terms of the value that we're creating through this new development, or even allowing. The MBTA to realize income from ground leasing portion, it it's very doable. Uh, we've been in conversations with the MBTA, they're amenable to, they understand the need to move the platform, so. Um, we we've looked at, you know, if in fact we're successful, can we create a business improvement district? So there are a number of mechanisms that are available to the town that don't make this a taxpayer liability. I think that the manager and myself have been very clear from the beginning, we don't wanna make this a taxpayer liability. Uh, and we won't, I mean, if we can't do it with somebody else's money, we're not gonna do it.
Right. Might, might be a few years away from a BID, but, uh, Business Improvement District.
Right, but I mean, it just, you know, again, looking, looking at how a DIF works, um, or a TIF. You know, those are things you can borrow against based on future income that you're not getting now, that could fund. That upfront move and then pay it back as, you know, those things stabilize.
Okay, um, I, thank you, Bob, appreciate the, um. The conversation here, any other questions from either the CED or the Planning Board? Okay, all right, Pat, what do we do next, do we open it up?
Oh, yeah, it's a, it's a public hearing, so why don't we open it to public comment, um, maybe Mister O'Brien can help us manage that.
Absolutely. So I do have, uh.
I think, I think we see Mister Lindy with his hand up.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mister Driscoll, and thank you, Suzie and Bob. Um, I appreciate the, um, hard work that everybody's done with this on both the CED and the Planning Board. And I just wanted to echo my strong support for what both, uh, Chair. Driscoll and Vice Chair McDonald said about the, um, the Planning Board role. I just wanna make sure that that's part of this process, it's really important to me that it is. And, uh, I appreciate my council colleagues and Brad's attempt at the last meeting to. Uh, come up with a compromise between six and four. I have not had one constituent contact me in support of anything more than four. So I just wanna put that in the public record, I know the council took a vote. And I, uh, the vote was six, I was opposed and I believe there were two abstentions. And, uh, so I think there are still questions about that and I I. My district is District Two, which is where most of this is is happening, so I just thank you for listening to my comments.
Any other public comments?
Wow, did we really cover it all?
Most.
If you'd like to make a public comment, you can raise your hands.
Okay, we got a couple now, uh, I see Donna Jewell and Mark P.
All right, I'll let, uh, Donna Jewell speak first.
Hi, my name is Donna Jewell. I live on Keith Place in Bridgewater. I'm a lifelong resident and I've been trying to follow this process as. Um, close as I possibly can, although it has been a little bit confusing at times. Um, I was one of the people that was at a community meeting. Uh, this past week. And I, we got people together because there was so much information floating around and lack of information flowing around. Even to the point that, um, people did not even know about the Perkins Foundry development. And I'm a little bit concerned and I know that's a problem we can't solve today is how we do. A better job in general of communicating to the public. I know. We don't have newspapers anymore, but social media being what it is. I'm not quite sure what the answer is, but I think that's something I'd like to see the town council address in the future. Um, and please not saying that nobody tried to communicate on this issue. Whether there were five meetings or twenty meetings, it doesn't matter, but what matters is that. Our residents are not aware of a lot of this and are coming in at the midnight hour. Um, the building height was one of my concerns and I think that's been thoroughly covered. I'm still concerned about the commercial and retail space and I'd like to have the opportunity to explain why. If I understand this correctly, there is going to be residential development and let's just just Broad Street as an example. Where there will be a lot of apartments or townhouses. And the retail space and commercial space could be minimal. I attended the meeting that Edgewood Development had at the library a week or two ago. And they went over their numbers and they said that yes, there was, um, only twelve percent retail space and part of that was going to be devoted to. Their own rental office. If we continue with that concept. Without having at least a minimum level of retail and commercial space required. I am concerned that the prime real estate up and down Broad Street. Will disappear to residential. And I think that's a real concern and. Some people have said to me, well, when we do Roach Brothers over, well, that could be years down the road. And if we're looking at redoing the Friendly's property and. The the foundry. I think we owe it to everybody to the people that are going to be moving into those residential units as well as to the residents of town. Of town who have been crying out for places to shop and. I have not seen one survey where. Residential apartments was the number one thing that people were crying out for. When I went to the September meeting with this, the concept is developing was initially presented. Everybody was asking for retail. I walked around and looked at those boards. So. My request would be to respectfully request add a minimum requirement. For retail and commercial space in those areas. I understand retail has changed. It's different today. People are looking for specialty retail. People have moved away from the city and are working at home or working in the suburbs. And they want some of the amenities, service amenities that they used to have. I'm basically begging you to reconsider that. Um, the project approval process, I'm happy to hear that there would be consideration to having the planning board on that. I was very much in favor with the original language that was in one of the drafts, I believe, back in. The end of January, early February, where it said that. The approval process would include the planning board, zoning board and town engineer. Um, I'd still, along with the C E D department, I'd still like to see that. There's been all kinds of conversations about moving the T. I have researched that probably almost as much as Bob, but not quite. And I would really like to see that separated from this issue of the downtown revitalization. I think it's, it's adding to confusion. I understand that we have until the beginning of June. To, um, submit what we're going to do in term to to, in order to qualify for. Um, certain financial aspects of the the MBTA process. So I just don't understand, maybe somebody can answer me, why we can't just strip this out of that. Um, this of the central business district. Language and treat that separately. Between now and the beginning of June and give the residents time to hear that out. And again, I know that the final plan does not need to be submitted to the state until December thirty first. But again, I understand that financial piece of the June deadline for other financial support. The main concerns and then about funding the T. The contributions I know need to meet legal requirements. I'm fully aware of. And my personal preference and others can speak if they agree or disagree with me. That if a developer had contributions to make, was willing to make financial contributions. That the, that the community would be much better served in total. By having those go to other things like water, sewer, our roads, our schools. Anything that could legally be, uh, required moving the T would be my last. Desire to see that. And I thank you for listening to me and I thank, um. The two counselors that came to our public meeting last week and to Mr. Driscoll. I think it was great to have them there to answer questions. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Driscoll or Ms. Robinson, do you want me to respond or would you just like to continue on?
Man, Bob, if you want, uh, Suzie, I'm fine with it. It's up to you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, I I think I mentioned before that. Specialty retail is, yeah, it's a wonderful thing to have and we've talked about, you know, Campus Plaza being miniature Mashpee Commons, but. And we've got to create the critical mass that can support those tenants to be able to move in there. At a lease that they can afford. Um, moving the the T is a critical part of how. Federal Realty looks and positions, whether they're gonna redevelop that piece themselves in a joint venture or they're going to sell it. When we talk about transit oriented development, I mean, it's a real thing. Um, so I mean. These things can happen simultaneously. They don't have to be independent. Um, I mean, I I'm somewhat confused that. We've done, you know, people that we've mailed three times to every taxpayer. In the town of Bridgewater, what we're doing that we're having public meetings. You know, we've, uh, so. If people, I mean, I acknowledge there's some people that don't know what we're doing and and that's fine, but we've. Done yeoman's work to communicate to the public what we're doing. Um, but there are realities in that exist now that thirty percent commercial. Which was only introduced in two thousand nineteen, we've seen zero new development in relation to commercial. It was incredibly arbitrary to make that thirty percent. Why we're holding ourselves to a number, we're not gonna, we're not able to reach that yet. Do I hope that? You know, in the next several years, we're going to improve that number. We absolutely will. But it would just suggest that we don't need more housing. Every element that we've talked about, I showed this flow chart. Yes, retail was. Something that was articulated in the comprehensive master plan. So was transportation, so was housing, so was infrastructure. These are all not mutually exclusive. And we're trying to address all of these things at the same time. And some of this work should have been done ten years ago. But it wasn't, so we're playing a serious game of catch up. Infrastructure being the biggest piece of this. So, I mean, there are a lot of balls in the air. I think what distinguishes Bridgewater from other communities is we have many balls in the air. We're not just singularly looking at. Let's just develop retail because that is a dead end right now. We need to address housing. The state has identified housing to be a priority. Whether I agree with the MBTA legislation or not. Those are the rules. We kick from the forty yard line now. But at the same time, we're trying to expand upon that. We're trying to create an environment that's gonna help the redevelopment and reinvestment in the Central Square area. We're working more closely with the university in terms of their cybersecurity program. Uh, marketing their commercial site for a tech company to come in where we get no tax revenue now. So there's many things happening simultaneously, but you know, to just focus on, we gotta get back to thirty percent commercial. That's not gonna happen until all these other things happen. And that's not just my opinion. You Google it. And I mean, I was, I spent a lot of time this afternoon, just, I could have put up a hundred articles about, you know. Why retail needs residential to support it. So, uh, it's, you know, and again, Donna and I said it on Friday at a meeting you were, I totally respect your commitment to this. And the passion that you put in it and I want to continue to work with you, but. There are certain realities and I know we have some developers that hopefully will talk tonight. This is not an easy business right now for development. But I can tell you at the Friendly's site, what I know is there would be a restaurant. There would be some commercial and there will be some residential. So that's a step up from, you know, we're moving in the right direction. We have business owners in town that are looking to see what happened, that want to expand their business opportunities, but. We haven't got anything in place for that to happen yet and it's important that we start to not, you know, we've. Get to the line and then we come back. So I'm very hopeful that, you know, we can reach some agreement that we get something approved next week. And I'm the first to acknowledge that will have to be tweaked as we move forward. But let's get something approved. So I don't want to be putting in a a grant application on June fourth. I would rather be putting it in in April.
So if I can just interject real quick, uh, Mr. Really, you keep using the word arbitrary when it comes to numbers, uh. Four stories is arbitrary, uh, thirty percent is arbitrary. How are you determining that? How is six stories not arbitrary? How is zero percent not arbitrary? What what is your, what is your metric for that?
Well, I mean, I think you were not the meaning that we had when the, we had some real estate professionals from out of the area coming. I mean, it's just the economics of what the. Development costs are. Thirty percent arbitrary right now is that how many vacant storefronts do we have? In in the downtown area and what, and the quality, and again, this is not a knock on any of those businesses. But we don't have the highest and best use of what those storefronts are. I think that if you were to talk to any lender, any bank. And ask them, I want to build a building with thirty percent commercial right now. They would say, good luck to you. We're not interested. So it's not arbitrary. The arbitrary was somebody picked the number in two thousand nineteen, said we should do thirty percent commercial. Based on what?
Okay, so you're going off like market metrics and talking to developers.
No, I'm not going off the market metrics. I'm looking back at, in two thousand nineteen, the zoning ordinance was amended. In the CBD and it was said, okay, we, we're gonna require thirty percent commercial. I don't know.
No, no, I I understand that. I'm asking, how did you come to in your initial proposal, uh, six stories and zero percent commercial? Was that market metrics? Did you talk to developers?
Two points, I mean, I I don't think I've ever said zero percent commercial. And six stories in terms of the type of construction that you're doing. If you had a five story building with a podium underneath for parking, that would be a six story building. It's just what the development economics are that in terms of what the cost of construction is and what the types of construction are. When you get above seven stories, it's a different form of construction. Six stories is seems to be the breakpoint of what. Is economical for mixed use development. And that's just an industry standard.
Okay, so you're going off industry standards, huh?
Well, uh, yeah.
Okay, I just, I I just also don't get how you could say, uh, you know, you didn't say zero percent commercial. Well, that's, that's what's written, you know, it's, uh. Commercial requirement, so that would be zero percent then, wouldn't it? There's no requirement.
There, I don't think there's one piece of the document that says zero percent commercial. We're giving people flexibility that developers are savvy enough to know that if they're. As a Campus Plaza example, they're gonna have some buildings that are hundred percent residential. That's what it wants to be. They're gonna have some buildings that are gonna have ground floor commercial. That, or in, whether that's professional office, retail, could be a grocery store. I mean, that's just the nature of of mixed use development.
I understand that. My concern is if you don't have a commercial requirement, then that's not a mixed use development. That's, you can. Hey, maybe if you toss a restaurant in, we're all good.
So, sorry, can I, can I, can I pause for a second here? Um, I. You know, just speaking as more of a layperson as well. I believe we do have a commercial requirement. I think Mr. Rully has indicated and the way the ordinance is written. Is it any site that's street, on the street facing? Does have a commercial requirement and it's a minimum of twenty five, um, feet. So, um, I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not, you know. I, I think we've talked through that piece and again, unfortunately, we're in this legislation that mandates. You know, that we will need to accommodate a plan for this. And that legislation is all about residential without commercial. So this additional piece is something that we are proactively adding in. So.
Ms. Robinson, I understand the the bit about if it's on the street as a commercial requirement, but then a developer will simply build. Outside of that buffer zone as we'd see them do with all of our other regulations.
We don't know yet.
So, Mr. McDonald, just. And Mr. R- Rully can clarify this. But if they follow the form base code, there's what they call frontage requirements. First, I think it's facade build out. So if you, so for example, if you had a two, two hundred, two hundred feet of frontage, you have to build out a hundred and sixty feet at the street. And go twenty five feet back, for example, and that would have to be the minimum commercial. Requirement. So there, if, even though it's not a percentage. There is a. A formula, so to speak, as the, I, I, and I, Mr. Really, they, they can't build a building out back. I believe until the building out front is satisfied, correct? Because they have to, they have to build to that frontage zone.
I mean, if if you look at any village center, neighborhood center in the northeast. That's how mixed use development is done. No one is, to build just residential is not serving anyone's purpose. You want to have those amenities in close proximity to your residence.
So, so I would agree, there's no commercial requirement, but the commercial requirement is based on the frontage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm just, I'm just concerned developers will circumvent that. It seems like it's easy enough to get around a lot of these.
There's not a way for them to circumvent it. It, it, so let me just stop, Mr. McDonald. So to your point, if they want to take advantage. Of the form base code in an expedited approval process, they have to check all the boxes. So if it requires. The commercial requirement, that's what they have to do. If they choose not to do that. They have the option to put a site plan or special permit application before the planning board. And they can, they can take that route. We, we're not saying that they can't do that. But if they didn't want to do the commercial, they're gonna have to come back to the planning board.
Okay, I understand, Mr. Really. Thank you for the explanation.
I think Mark P was next.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is Mark Peterson, forty three Church Street. Um, I don't know if it's been brought up before or asked, um, but as far as, um. Building and redeveloping a site, will, would that put them, or a, a, a project site into? Um, uh, a new phase of determining if like wetland buffer and, um. And stormwater management B N Ps, because some of these sites haven't been touched for fifty years and the B N Ps have updated. Uh, since then and riverfront protection, um.
The form base code specifically say, says that, you know, we can't ignore. Whatever environmental regulations there are, um, you know, clearly any new development. Is gonna have to have advanced B N Ps for stormwater management and we don't get to circumvent any of those requirements. Um, if. The attraction is, is that we're gonna have much better stormwater management than we have now. Because we're gonna have advanced B N Ps on sites.
E- even for the federal building too?
What federal building?
Sorry, not the federal bill, but the federal realty company, though.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, they're not different. Federal Realty is, they're not a federal entity. That's just the name of their company.
I understand that. Uh, would they have to move further away from the river, though?
We don't know what they're proposing. I mean, it, it's, um, you know, that is gonna be. Site specific when something comes in, but there's no free pass on environmental or wetland regulation requirements.
But I mean, but a lot of the assumptions of them being six stories and then having frontage. Does that take into account maybe a buffer that they need to move away from the town river?
They would have to anyways. I mean, and, you know, and, I mean, that, that doesn't, again, those regulations don't go away. Think we've established that we're not gonna be six stories. They potentially could be five stories, but they're gonna have to meet all of those. D E M regulations or D E P regulations.
And they're not grandfathered in.
And that, definitely not grandfathered in.
That's all. Thank you.
Dan, I think we've missed out more.
Fair thing.
Hi, my name's David Moore. I, uh, I've got a little bit of experience.
Hi, my name's David Moore. I, uh, I've got a little bit of experience with zoning and town government. I was building inspector in town for twenty years. And zoning officer, so from that, I've seen a lot of businesses come and go in the center of town. And, uh, I agree with Mr. Rully that you need patrons. Without patrons, business, retail, nobody's coming in. Well, right now, uh, I see we've got three major problems in town. We've got water, traffic and sewer. I'm glad to hear your suggestions with the prison for sewer. Uh, we've been talking about that for thirty years. I'm glad to see you moving forward with it. Uh, water from the prison, I remember the, the problems that the prison had. I don't know, fifteen, twenty years ago, trying to get water from Taunton, from Assawamset and so forth. It was like pulling teeth. It was really, so I'm not optimistic that you're gonna get any water out of this, uh, the, uh, uh, Taunton. Uh, but the biggest one I see is traffic. I agree that you need patrons. Well, okay, so you build. Residential units around and, uh, the patrons will be there for the businesses. But I would like to see a focus right now on making it possible for residents. To get in and utilize some of the services, uh, that a few businesses offer. Uh, right now, it's gridlock in the morning, gridlock in the afternoon. It's been that way for twenty years. Uh, it's been there for a long time. So. Uh, in the beginning of the presentation, you showed a, a list of grants that were available, that were not gonna be. Uh, available for application. Because if this legislation doesn't go through, we got a problem. I agree. I would say, let's pass that state legislation as soon as, as soon as possible. To open the door so that we can apply for these grants and so forth. Uh, let's work on these three big issues, get going on that, and over the next six months. Let's fine-tune the rest of the package so that we can, so we can get going on it. Is it possible to break, uh, the state legislation off of this, get it through and, and work on the rest of the package later?
No, I mean, I think, you know, a- again, Mr. Moore, thank you very much. I mean, you know, we. I think the, the document as it exists and has been presented for tonight is what we would like to move forward. Contemporaneous to that is, yeah, we are working on water and, and sewer. I, I'm aware and I've had this conversation with you previously. I, I know that conversations with the prison on wastewater have been going on. We're actually having those now. I don't know, I mean, I think there's a different mindset in Taunton. There may or may not be. An option there, but there are other options that we're looking at, as I mentioned, that there are conversations with respect to. Uh, Brockton, whether it's Silver Lake or the desalinization plant, I mean. There are things we need to do. Could we withdraw more for the town river and make improvements to our water treatment plant? Those are all things on the table. Um, those are all conversations that need to happen. Those are all huge capital expenses, so. And we're being vigilant on that, but we are not, you know, ignoring any of those things. To your point on traffic, yeah, the traffic now is, has nothing to do with any new development we're doing. We haven't done anything. That traffic now is, is either passing through town, it's a lot of truck traffic. And, you know, we need to mitigate that. As I said, I mean, the council last month approved a resolution. To start some engineering, uh, to look at those improvements, and that's what we're gonna do. So. I mean, I'm encouraged that we are addressing many of these things that have been talked about for ten, fifteen, twenty years. We're doing all of that now, um, and. But I also appreciate your comment that let's get this approved so we can access the money to do these studies.
Okay, is it possible to break, break off that first piece and comply with the state legislation? And then work on the rest of this in a couple of months or down the road?
I don't know that there's anything to break off. I mean, you know, we're, you know, I think that it's all part and parcel that. We approve this. I mean, we're not gonna stop looking at these other elements, whether we break it off. There's nothing to break off. And the zoning amendment and the form-based code are a document. I mean, what we're saying is, and what we've been saying from the beginning. And what we're frustrated with that the state doesn't recognize is. We're the only community that's saying, we want to be in compliance with your legislation. But we also want to address wastewater. We want to address water. We want to address transportation. We want to address all these other issues. And there's no acknowledgement that we need some assistance. So I think we pass the legislation, we start to access that. Chinese menu, if you would, of, of funding opportunities. Um, and as I said, some of these have nothing to do with downtown. You know, we are, you know, the town wants to acquire the Hanson, you know, development rights. That's queued up to be an MVP. Funding. I mean, that application is ready to go. We can't submit that unless we know this is gonna go forward. So, you know, it, it's. It's a complicated, but I don't want to break anything off. I want to do as many things as we can at one time and continue to look at these things.
I, I know you don't want to break anything off, but I don't see these huge packages in other communities that have adopted the state legislation.
Shame on them.
Well, you want to get this through now? I, I suggest that you do it that way and work on the other stuff later.
When we be breaking off? I, I guess that's my question.
Compliance with the state legislation that we make it available to create another fourteen hundred units.
That piece we can't break off. That, that we have to do.
Right, so leave it there.
So what else would you break off?
Uh, the six-story buildings, the lack of citizen involvement, uh.
Parcel of, of, of what a zoning amendment is, what the process is. So we have developers that are. Either under contract or developing parcels in town now. I mean, so are we gonna, you know. We're gonna tell them that, you know, sorry, your money's at risk. I mean, this is an ongoing process. I mean, you know, I, I, I read a comment that this. This whole plan was pie in the sky. We're moving too fast. We have three out of seven projects that are moving forward. In nine months. There hasn't been this much progress in twenty years.
Many people are gonna have trouble getting water and sewer hookups right now.
And we're trying to address that.
Okay, so let's, let's move forward with some of these grants. The state owns twenty-five percent of the town. So we've got to have a good position on some of these grants to get water and sewer and traffic.
I, I would like to think so.
All right, well, let's make it possible to go for these grants now.
I can't apply for those grants until we're, when we, until we're compliant. With the MBTA legislation, legislation.
Okay, do it.
Well, I need the town council to approve that for me to do.
I, I support the town council to approve that legislation. I just have pros, I have a problem with a lot of the other items. And, you know, whatever you can do to, to, to make it go forward somewhat. To solve these three big issues, I'd be in favor of a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Well, I might not agree with Mr. Moore on, uh, the eventual outcome. Uh, I don't believe his question was really answered. Why could you not break off MBTA compliance from the rest of the? Broader zoning changes. Why not do a package that complies with the MBTA Act, which granted, I still would be in favor of, and then do the rest of the zoning changes later?
My, and, and just to Michael and David, my, I think if you did anything, I mean, and I. I, I think if you did anything, you'd break the MBT off and do that later. I mean, I think the form-based code has been pretty well-vetted. And I think that in this, you know. And I think the MBTA communities relies on some of the language in the form-based code, such as design standards that we want to add, right? So we don't want to just have somebody build fifteen units per acre not at design standard. So I think. I, I think if I were gonna do it, I'd do it the opposite way. I'd adopt the design standards, everything else. I mean, if, it, I'm not saying I would break anything off, but. The form-based code should be passed before the MBTA zoning. Because that's gonna drive the design standards and, and all that stuff for the types of buildings and how they look.
But if I'm understanding correctly, though, I mean, if we're talking about. If the train station were to stay where it is, then we're literally talking about no commercial. Correct?
I don't know that you're saying there's no commercial, but the.
Well, it's not part of the central business district.
Right, I mean, and, and the opportunities to redevelop. Campus Plaza are diminished because the, the, the lack of access to public transportation. They, they, they would say, okay, let's just leave it alone. You know, our opportunity to access federal money for microtransit would go away. Um, you know, these things are all interrelated. I mean, that's. It's been my theme all along is that they're not one-dimensional. Um, the opportunity that we have is that this is multi-dimensional. There are many different funding sources. That we can access by moving forward with this. It's not to say that, you know, once this is approved, we can't tweak it. We need to, but, you know, we're up against some hard dates right now. Yeah, January, I mean, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four is the drop dead date. But if we don't meet the April and May dates for getting into the funding queue, other communities are getting this money. There's no guarantee that there's gonna be money next year, um, and the ARPA money is gonna run out. And the fe- the, the other federal money is gonna run out. So, you know, our intention all along was to be ahead of everyone else. Now we're. Not ahead of everyone else. We're kind of mid-pack right now.
But, but Bob, I think getting back to the original question of why can't we separate it, I, I, you know, perhaps I might be overstating. Um, you know, or making it too, you, you know, apologies if this is oversimplifying, but. Isn't it fair to say that even if we did separate it? We would still want to be using the majority of what we've built for this form-based code for. This MBTA legislation.
Form-based code is not, you know, the form-based code works with the relocated platform. I mean, form-based code works for redevelopment.
Oh, right, 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 right. So, but yeah, so if it's not relocated, the, the challenge there is in, then we would have. We would have to write different zoning amendments. That would not give us the advantage of taking advantage of the central business district. So it really would just be residential buildup. Benefiting the downtown.
Excuse me, I think, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason we have twenty percent. Between Borough Lab and Hooper Ave is because we're trying to comply with where the existing train station is. So even if, and, and this is just my opinion, Bob, Ashane can tell me if they disagree. In my opinion, based on the way that these two overlays are established, we comply with the train is. Or if it moves. So if it never moves, we don't have to change anything, in my opinion. Is that correct, Bob?
It is, but you won't get any kind of redevelopment in the way that you think you're gonna get it. Because a lot of that is based on, you know, you're creating a very vibrant transit-oriented downtown area.
Right, and that's not my point. My point, though, is, is that we're designing, we're designing these overlays so that we comply now. And if the train moves, we still comply later on.
Correct. But also, you have developers that are in the queue now. That if this gets delayed or doesn't get approved, they probably go away. So, I mean, you know, we have opportunities now.
I'm not, I don't think, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm, I never said delay. I just, I'm trying to. I think there's some confusion as to the overlays and that they're residential only. The over, the overlay in the CBD are can either be. Underlying zoning in, in CBD, which could be all commercial. It can be form-based code, which could be mixed-use, or it could be MBTA zoning. And just all residential. I mean, you have, a, 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 a landlord in the, in the CBD are overlay has three different, three different options. In the CBD are without an overlay, they have the underlying zoning, which is commercial only. Or they have the form-based code, which is mixed-use. So. I think, I, I don't think. I don't think a lot of it will be all residential. I think that hopefully we still get a lot of commercial in those areas, even though there's MBTA overlays.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think that, you know, I think, you know, what we've seen in, in terms of. Campus Plaza is, we don't know what they want to do. Perkins, they're doing what they need to do to get that project moving forward. I think it was a good compromise, you know. In giving up the commercial space, we got two hundred thousand dollars in mitigation. And we got a commitment for deed-restricted affordable units. Uh, in terms of what we anticipate seeing at the friendly site, we're seeing a mix of residential and commercial. With respect to the corner of Hale and Plymouth, that's a technology building that, I mean, is something that's important, that won't be housing, but. The market is gonna find its own balance, um, but. Until we get into the market, there will be no balance.
All right, do we have, uh, either Shane, do you know who raised a hand first, Mr.?
Uh, well, Don, Donna already spoke, so I'd let Brian Quinlan speak.
How you doing, Brian Quinlan, uh, Corrin Terrace? Um, a couple of questions. As far as, um, Bob, you mentioned something earlier regarding forty B. If we didn't have enough water, um, or sewer app, um, availability, you could shut those projects down. Do we currently, right now, actually have enough water and sewer for these projects that are going on? Um, also, has anyone done a study on how many? Uh, T commuters there are coming in and out of the train station? You know, per day and how that would impact those amount of cars, would impact the Route eighteen exit? Across from, uh, Roach Brothers and all that to affect traffic in that area? Um, and what was, I had one other thing. I can't remember what I was gonna say right now, so.
Well, if it comes back to, let me answer your first two questions and, and not necessarily in order. So, on average, the ridership from the current platform is a hundred, plus or minus, in and out. Um, not very significant. Um, you know, I think what you have to keep in consideration is if the platform was moved. All of that student parking that's impacting traffic now abroad and. Uh, Plymouth Street would be moving over to the south side of Plymouth Street. So, I mean, it's kind of a, a net-net. In terms of what the impact is, um. So that, that's that part of it. Does, does that answer your question with respect to that?
As far as that, yeah.
And with respect to water and sewer. We have capacity, but, you know, again, we're not, and I think it's important to understand that. These developments aren't coming online tomorrow. The Foundry Site is probably eighteen months to two years away. Uh, if the Friendly's Assemblage goes, you know, that might be eighteen months. We have sufficient capacity now for those. But we're also, you know, trying to get ahead of the curve and say, that's not, we don't want to be right up against our limits, so. Why are we looking at alternatives in trying to accelerate conversations with respect to? Uh, making sure that we have sufficient infrastructure capacity. It, in my experience, it is one of the most, infrastructure capacity is the first question I ask. When I consider taking a job, because I know how critical it is. So, I, all I can tell you is it's a priority for me. It's a priority for the manager. We're having these conversations. We're looking at alternatives, but. Note, not different than the forty Bs, Brian, is if we don't have that capacity. These projects will either be on hold or they won't go forward. Because health, safety and welfare are reasons to deny a forty B if you don't have sufficient infrastructure. That is not gonna be any different if it's a, a market rate project or a forty B project. So. It's something that we're keenly aware of and, and, and addressing, and I appreciate you bringing it up again, because we are not ignoring the importance of that.
I agree, you're not. You, I mean, there's steps being taken that have, you know, helping the process out. But it just seems like, you know, in order to facilitate all these, um, you know, like if Roach Brothers started to get developed and all that. The taxpayers are now gonna have to foot the bill for, we'd have to do it anyhow, probably, but not to the extent of. What these projects would put on the taxpayers in town.
Well, I mean, just, and I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I shared a slide. So the capital expenditures that the town needs to make. By FY thirty for water and sewer, do not contemplate any new development. Those are. Capital expenditures that have to happen if nothing new happened. I mean, so that, that's the point we're trying to make is that we need to identify additional sources of revenue with. Whether that be through grants or taxes that aren't gonna impact current taxpayers that can address those bills that are coming due. Those bills have nothing to do with, they don't contemplate any new development.
And also the sidewalk aspect that everyone was talking about as, as well as far as making this town walkable. I mean, I look around now and my son's fourteen years old. We live over on Corinne. And just for him to get around town, there's no sidewalks anywhere around here. Corinne Summer heading towards Flag, going down Flag. There's, there's no sidewalks anywhere. Um, you know, we gotta, we gotta do some, I know we're talking about downtown, but. We got to do something about making the actual town more. Easily, you know, like you guys are saying, walkable.
And 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 I don't disagree, and and I think that's, you know, one of the, you know, the points that we're trying to make is. There are funding sources available that have no. Don't even apply to downtown. Um, you know, we've, my staff is working with OCPC and DOT. For improvements on Flag Street that require sidewalks and a bike as a path. And we are, you know, complete streets. We had a meeting today. We're trying to improve some sidewalks on Main Street. We have to finish that project before we can apply for other money, but there are other areas of town that need road improvements. And sidewalk improvements, and where is the money going to come for that? So if we're able to increase what our tax base is and not impact current taxpayers. Those are sources of revenue, because I've heard it, I heard it last, you know, Friday at a meeting we had at the senior center, that, yeah. Pedestrian safety is paramount to a walkable community. And if our sidewalks aren't safe, then we don't have pedestrian safety. So I mean, that's, it is a priority for us and I appreciate you. You know, mentioning it, but you know, it is, you know, something we're looking at. And again. The vision and reality is not to benefit just downtown, it's to benefit the entire community.
Right. And the T move was moved by the university years ago from that, the location we want to move it back to. Now, is this going to be put on, I I came in a little late on the meeting. Is this going to be put on, who's paying for to move that back?
We we don't think that this, I mean, you know, again, we've looked at, you know, there's a couple of options that. You know, the T owns the parking lot. If they can do a ground lease to develop a portion of that, that generates revenue. If we can get money from the development community to pay for the platform. I don't know, I mean, I've heard rumors of the story of why the platform is where it is. Um, the university is not going to pay for it, um, but we're also not expecting that taxpayers have to pay for it either.
Because when it was Bridgewater State, that's when it was moved, because they were trying to get more ridership or more, um, people in the. Into the college.
Right, there was a, I mean, my understanding is there was. A president that was hopeful that students from the South Boston Dorchester area would would come to Bridgewater because they could take the train. Probably well-intentioned, but didn't necessarily work out the way that he may be anticipated.
And now we're paying the price to, you know, move that again, you know, not paying.
I mean, again, I want to be clear that, you know, we're trying to.
You're saying, we're not going to pay for it, but we're trying to find out the means to get it done. But now the state wants us to move it in order to, well, is the state behind moving the platform or is that the?
MBTA is supportive of us moving, but they're not asking us to move it. We, in terms of. A strategic economic revitalization plan and transportation improvements. We've initiated the discussion to move it back where it should be. The state is not requiring us or asking us to move it.
Well, to fit this half-mile radius around all these MBT communities, now we move it in, now you got a bigger berth of that half-mile. So, all right, thank you.
And Mrs. Joel.
Hi, thank you. Um, I neglected to. Commend you on the job that the group has done on the design standards. I think they're phenomenal. I think they're, um, very much needed and I'm happy to see them. I'm also happy to see the streamlined permitting process, because I think that makes it more attractive to other developers. And I just, um, wanted to clarify to Mr. Ruley that when I was talking about. A higher percentage for commercial and retail, I was not advocating for thirty percent. I was just advocating for something more than what's I believe to be written in the code today. Perhaps it's twenty percent. I don't know exactly what that right number is. I would never recommend thirty percent. But I do think we owe it to all of ourselves and the community to have there be a firm number in there. And not left as a, what I see is a very gray area. And my last question, um, to ask is when will we see something on Central Square redevelopment, a plan for that?
Well, as I mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, we have a meeting of the Downtown Committee of the. Uh, council tomorrow to look at how we're going to move forward. On transportation and pedestrian improvements in terms of, we have, we anticipate some infill development in Central Square, but. We've never advocated for tearing down existing buildings in Central Square. So, um. I mean, we we have a couple of projects that are going to come forward that we think are complimentary, but. We we're hopeful that, uh, we can make some improvements to some of the existing buildings. Uh, we were hopeful that we were going to get a community development block grant for facade improvements. Uh, the state came back to us and says unless we declare Central Square to be blight. We can't get that as money, so we have to look at different sources. And again, I go back to that. You know, the fourteen different funding sources that are available. There are a number of different, you know, programs that we can look at, but. We are not, you know, advocating for demolition in the downtown, in the Central Square area. There are parcels here and there that we can have infill development, which we think are complimentary. Uh, we think the rehabilitation of the Old Town Hall is critical to, uh, the Central Square revitalization. Think the traffic improvements we make are going to help that, but I mean, there is no hard, fast plan yet, other than. Uh, what is included in the zoning amendment and how we go forward in treating applications that come forward, but. You know, there's no form-based code associated with this, you know, the Central Square area. And 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 to your point, you know, I I don't know that we're comfortable saying twenty percent should be the number. I think. You know, the market needs to find itself that we have the flexibility. Once we see things starting to happen. We can adjust what those requirements are, but twenty percent might be unachievable now. And where we've seen nothing happen at thirty, twenty might scare people away. Um, so I mean, I think that. I I'm a hundred percent supportive of seeing more commercial. And hospitality and professional offices. I just think it's dangerous right now to put a number out there when we've got nothing happening. And, you know, we have conversations with developers every day, every week. Both local, regional and national, and they're all reacting to what's happening in the market right now, and it's all. Related to financing and what can get financed, and it's very, very difficult to get deals financed now. And retail is the one that scares them more than anything else.
If you had to, uh, the opportunity to amend this in the future, Mr. Ruley, once the market stabilizes, what do you think a good number would be?
Yeah, I think we need to see where we are, Mr. McDonald. I mean, I think like with any ordinance, you know, the the council. Always has the ability to adjust this. Um, I I'm hopeful. That in three or four years, we have the ability to require more commercial. Or, you know, or office or, you know, or hospitality, but we're just not there now. I mean, and. You know, if the development community was here, I mean, they would tell you that, you know, the struggles they're having trying to make these deals pencil out. But yeah, I I'm hopeful that I would like to see us get to a higher percentage as we move forward and. You know, same thing with respect to some of the residential requirements. As we move forward, I think we. This is not a static document that we're going to want to make amendments moving forward, based on where the market is.
Of course. Do you do you have a guess? Any any figure you just ballpark for? What that may be in the future, if if the market were to stabilize back to, say, uh, ten years.
I mean, I I think that, you know, I mean, we're at almost eleven percent with the Perkins and. You know, as Ms. Jewel said, that includes their retail office, which, again, I mean, it is a commercial use. It may not be. The ideal commercial use, but, you know, I I think if we get to twenty, twenty-five percent in the future. Based on the amount of housing that we have, I don't think that's inappropriate.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Hey, is there anybody else who would like to speak or ask questions? Any other planning board questions? Comments?
So I I'm seeing a a message from in the chat. Mr. Justco from Mr. Moore, that the Downtown Committee meeting, I think that's a posted meeting, that's a public meeting. Uh, so Mr. Moore, I would just say go onto the town's website. It's a Zoom meeting. You should be able to access it. Hopefully that answers your question. Thank you.
All right, so do we have any other? Is there no other comments? I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Robinson, for, see if your board has any comments or questions.
Yeah, CED Committee, any comments? Nope, seeing none. Thank you.
Myself. So back to the planning board, so no more comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
From Mr. Haley, do a second.
Second.
From Mr. Geller. Any discussion? I'll take the role. Is Ms. Rojas with us tonight? She's not, correct?
Uh, Ms. Rojas is not here and, uh, Ms. Pagon left, so we have four members.
Okay, I just can't see. All right, so, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald? Mike?
I apologize. Uh, yes.
I mean, yes. Okay, Suzie, do you want to decide if you're going to keep your public hearing open or close it?
Yep, um, can we see a motion on the floor for closing the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I would, uh, second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? No. Uh, roll call vote, Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Chase?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Three, um, the motion passes. Thank you.
So deliberation, Suzie, do we kind of want to do it together, or do you want the planning board to talk about it first with their proposed amendments and recommendation? And then you go, or do you want to join in with us? Or how do you want to handle it?
Um, why don't we, why don't we do it, um, together since, so we're not like, you know, kind of going back and forth on the same items, so. Um, I think we've been pretty much in in similar alignment on on most of the fronts. Um. So, yeah, let's do it that way. With, I think the first item was, um, back around the, um, uh, your your point around. The, um, expedited approval process.
Yeah, so I, I, um, I wrote, you know, so I, I kind of broke it down into two, two different sections, so. I I sent an email to Bob and Shane today, so they they knew I'd be suggesting this. And I basically just suggested that under the form-based code in the CBDR. That during the thirty-day review process. Uh, during the thirty thirty-day review period. The submit all the plans for the development be sent to the planning board for a discussion, comments and recommendation. Back to the CED office prior to, prior to, uh, approval. Uh, this would be done at a public meeting, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting, again, not a public hearing. Um, and it would, it would have to be completed and reported back to the CED prior to approval. Uh, within that thirty-day period, or unless an applicant for some reason asks it for an for an extension. So it it wouldn't be a long drawn-out process. It would just be a second set of eyes on the on the permitting, so that one department doesn't have all to say. And we would make a recommendation back to the CED department before they approve the project. I mean, they could join us at the public hearing, which, the public meeting, which I imagine would happen. Um, and that that would be the recommendation for that. Under the MBTA zoning, though, the MBTA overlay, which is partly in 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 residential D. And partly in the CBDR. We would want that, we would want that under nine point nine four. We would want. We would want that project to be subject to site plan review by the planning board, so that would be a public hearing. And it shall comply with our site plan standards, review staff, performance standards and landscape standards. So. Looking solely at the site, and I think that's what the MBTA law allows. So that would be, that would be more stringent. Than the expedited permitting, which would be under the the form-based code. Pat, I think I agree with those. It sounds really, really good way to go.
Just, my only concern, Pat, is, I I think they're good suggestions, but if we're just making a recommendation, that still leaves one body with all the power. You know, it's not an approval process. We can't approve or deny anything. They don't have to go through multiple steps, you know.
Well, and I, the only reason I I did it that way was because it. It it is expedited permitting and just trying to move the process along. Um, I mean, we could vote to approve, I mean, Mr. Ruley, how do you, how do you see that playing out in that thirty-day period? I I I I did speak to the West Bridgewater Building Inspector, because. For certain site plans over there, what happens is is it is expedited permitting. It comes into his office. He sends it to the planning board, uh, within a thirty-day window. They review it at a regularly scheduled meeting. They re- they send a report back to the. The building department, and then it's up to the building inspector whether to issue the permit, issue the permit with conditions, but to not issue it, so. I was trying to follow that process. I don't know how how we could amend it, but that's, I was trying to, that seemed like a pretty simple process. Where it it moves things along, but at the end of the day, if Mr. Solari and, um. Who will ultimately issue the permit and. Mr. Ruley decides to issue the permit, that's up to them, but at least we're on record with a review and comments and and whatnot, but I'm open to other suggestions, so.
I mean, I just, sorry, Mr. Really, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
I just, I'm just looking for clarity. Why are we going for an expedited permitting process in the first place? What is, what is the, uh, the reason, the thought for that?
Can I address that?
Yeah, yes, that is, that was to you, sorry.
Oh, I mean, as an example, um, time is money. Um, you know, I'll use the, the, not. Pointing fingers of blame or just using it as example, the the Perkins Foundry project took three years to be approved, not. Saying whose fault that was, but.
They, I mean, they needed zoning changes.
I mean, my point is.
I mean, they're they're still, they're still not through DEP, so I, you know.
I but there there's been market changes in that, you know, just looking at interest rates over that three-year period adds a million dollars of debt service. To a project, so they're in a position, obviously, that they can absorb that, but other projects wouldn't. But developers are looking for, you know, the form-based code is something that. The developer is looking at, say, this is what the community's requirements are. We can meet all those requirements and it's. Predictable outcome, that we're not going to be a year, two years, three years through the approval process. That has an impact on their economics, so, um, again, I go back to. In twenty years, you haven't seen really any significant new development in town. Um, we are trying to make things happen that are consistent with what the community wants in terms of scale and mass. Being compliant with the MBTA communities and and take advantage of. That there is interest in doing development downtown, so, um. I mean, form-based code has been adopted in a number of communities throughout the country. It works, um. And that's the simplest answer that I can give you. I I don't have a problem, Mr. Driscoll, with, you know, the thirty-day review. I mean, that. Again, ultimately, that's the council's decision whether they want to include that, but we had. When we drafted the document, we included the technical review committee, so we always wanted to have community input. It was only when we realized that committee by the town's charter required that there be. Town residents, so I have no problem having the community have a look at this through the lens of the planning board.
And and Bob, um, isn't it fair to say too, because of the form-based code, because of all the sort of preset standards, that that in theory should be. Expediting additional cycles that may happen in a development project that doesn't have form-based code.
I, that that's correct.
Yeah.
I mean, the other, the other.
Thirty days sound like a very, oh, sorry, cut, go ahead.
I mean, the other thing too is that i- if we found something blatantly in violation of zoning or not following the form-based code, I mean. We would obviously make that known to to them, and we could go back and. You know, we could bring that to the council's attention and say, hey, CED isn't following the rules, and and we could ask for a zoning change to change it at that point, but I think. I I think there definitely should be more than just the CED department looking at it. I think it should come to the planning board, but I do think. I, I think there definitely should be more than just the CED department looking at it. I think it should come to the planning board, but I do think it should be ex- expedited. Um. Just whether it's a non-binding recommendation for now, and then if, if that doesn't work, we change it to a binding or something like that, you know?
Why not start with the binding and change it to a non-binding if we have to? Also, thirty days.
Well, the, 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 the other thing, the, the other thing, the other thing too, when I said this, I think I said this to Suzie and to, to Shane and Bob earlier. I think if you have site plan review, full-blown site plan review on the MBTA stuff, which really probably won't have any commercial component to it. And then you have expedited permitting. With a thirty day review process on the form-based code side. You're almost making it more appealing to a developer to go to the form. If, if they're in a zone where you can do both. It may be more appealing, and that's what I'm trying to do, is make it more appealing for the form-based code with the design standards, the commercial components to be. To be more appealing, expedited, you know, no, no affordable requirement. Um, but a commercial requirement, so if a developer can come in and say, hey. I'm gonna, I'm in the CBDR where it's form-based code or it's MBTA zoning. I can either do. You know, fifteen units per acre, or I might be able to do form-based code, get more units per acre, get commercial and have no commercial requirement and have expedited permitting. If I'm, if I'm looking at a site, I'm like, I'm gonna try to do everything I can to go form-based code, so. I, I think if we leave that flexibility there now, but have the second set of eyes on it, and then have the full site plan review for the overlay. Uh, if it's just MBTA zoning, then I think that, that will make a huge difference.
I mean, that makes a lot of sense, but I mean, thirty days, if, if you think of it this way, that's two planning board meetings. How many projects have we approved in two planning board meetings? There's about, there's about some, but.
I would, I would, so, so, so if the, the zoning calls out a pre-review. So by the time it gets to us. It should have already gone through that pre-review. And the reason I said the thirty days is after the pre-review, if you look at the ordinance, that's their timeline to turn the, to, to make a decision. So I'm just trying to match up our timeline with the timeline that they set for the expedited permitting. So I didn't just pick thirty days, that's why.
No, no, I know, I, I get you. I, I would, I would just like to see that. I don't know. Can we double that at least, you know, two months? That's. Two months for a, a whole uh, project.
I mean, we should, we should, we, we should be able to do it two meetings if it's just. You know, everything should be reviewed by the time we get it. I mean, if you, if you look at the pre-submital. You know, engineering and everybody's gonna look at it hopefully before we get it. I mean, if we get it and. And the town engineer hasn't looked at anything yet, we're waiting for, I mean, then that's a problem, but we have to make sure. And I would hope that the CED office is gonna have things in line where they. You know, and I've, I've talked to Shane about this before, we. We should, when, when we hand something over to the, the engineering department, we should get a date from them as to when it's gonna be reviewed, then put it on the agenda, so we're not. Starting a hearing without a review. Hopefully, all that's done, and, and it, it appears that. The pre-review process, all that stuff's gonna be done before it even comes to us, so we should be able to do it thirty days.
I agree, that's ideally how it should work. I like to plan for problems, though. Uh, you never know what's gonna happen. Uh, so I think we should just add a, add another thirty days, double it to sixty days is. Plenty quick for.
Well, the way, the way, the way I wrote it and sent it to um, to Shane, Bob and Suzie today, I said, within thirty days, unless agreed upon, unless there's an agreed upon extension. So if we had to say to the developer, we need one more meeting, could you, right, you know, agree to it? They can say yes or no.
Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Chase has his hand up.
Mr. Chase?
Uh, thank you.
Well, actually, this is, you can. You're part of the deliberation. You can, you don't need to raise your hand.
Well, uh. Nonetheless. Thank you. Um, just a couple of quick points. I, I think the thirty day period is. Appropriate and reasonable, uh, particularly insofar as what you've just added with respect to the ability of a, of adding an additional period on a case-by-case basis. And remember, after all, with form-based code in place. Um, so many of the questions are, are going to have been resolved long in advance. That's the whole point of form-based code, and. Just as to form-based code, the real benefit, and I think we've amplified on this point, is. Uh, predictability. It's, it's certainty of outcome. And that's certainly something that in, in terms of dollars and cents is gonna be meaningful. Uh, and important to any potential uh, developer. Uh, and just finally, with respect to the point raised by Mr. McDonald. The question I should say as to. You know, why, um, you know, why the decision is not. Dispositive in the hands of the planning board. Um. Look at tonight's meeting, our joint meeting between the, our committee of the council and the planning board. Um, the input of the planning board, which is very significant and important. That is advisory. You are making recommendations. And ultimately, it is the council that implements those uh, into law. So, you know. Right now, the relationship between planning. Uh, and the town council is such. Of an advisory uh, nature, so why should it be uh, differently with respect to anything else uh? Uh, germane to the. The role we have together. Uh, I, I think it should be just the same, just as we have discussed it.
Well, that's not necessarily true, though.
I think the difference here, though, is that council won't be deciding on development projects.
Yeah, we're not, and we're not an advisory board, Fred, or, or a, or a ministerial.
You're not an advisory board, but you make recommendations to the council for implementation of changes with respect to zoning.
Correct.
But that's not what really what we're talking about here. We're talking about approving.
No, I'm using that as an example to show that it should be conducted in the same manner.
And I think, I mean, the big difference for me is that. You're elected town residents, right? So. Having, having a, as. A, a CED board, having a CED committee. Just weighing in on the projects. I think we need to have some town input, and I think by. Having this compromise where it comes to us for a thirty day period, at least we have input on the project. And if it's blatantly ignored or they go against their own regulations, then we have to point that out to the council. You folks, and you have to decide if you wanna make a change or not, how that, how that, how, how that is run.
That's right.
Uh, one question about the thirty day uh, period, um. Does that count, like, is that thirty business days, just thirty calendar days? How would that, how would that work out? Because if, you know, if somebody submits a project like December.
It would be calendar days.
So, so when a project comes in, there's a preliminary application review. Okay? That, that preliminary application review. Um, so it says prior to the scheduling of, of an application, preliminary application review, and within ten days of receiving the request. They shall notify the applicant as to whether or not the materials are adequate. Um, so it's, so it's, um, and if, if, if they need to, there'll be a time and a location for a meeting, that meeting will happen within twenty days. That's, that, that's almost thirty days just in the preliminary application review. Then you go to the development review, and that process has to be done. It says within thirty days of deeming the application complete, D C, D E. D CED staff shall determine whether the application satisfies the checklist requirements. So during that period, after they've already gone through that first thirty day. Thirty day period. We'll review it and give our comments back. I would imagine, I mean, we can work out when that happens. Maybe we get it, maybe if it's ready early in the preliminary, they send it over to us to start looking at, so. I mean, th- there looks like Bob, it could take a total of sixty days for permitting max, right?
That's correct.
Based on preliminary and, and that.
It could be fifty days or it could be sixty days.
Right, so there's, there's already, there's already a sixty day period built in there, which I think. And typically. Long before we even start our review process, Shane gets us the stuff over in advance to start looking at, so.
Could we potentially switch that to business days and? I'd be okay with dropping the day number down. I just, I just wanted it to be a consistent.
There, we would never use the function of business days.
Oh, really?
We, we don't, we don't use that in any form.
Okay, gotcha. My apologies.
I, I think. And if it doesn't work, we can make an adjustment, but I think that's, I think sixty days is a pretty long time. So that's, I mean, so, so, so those were the two recommendations I had around site plan review for MBTA. And the, the planning board review for the uh.
Form-based code?
The, yeah, the CBDR, because CBDS comes to planning board already.
Okay. Any um, comments or feedback other than? Mr. Chase? Brad, any thoughts?
No, I think. Okay, I had a couple more.
Oh, sorry. Well, I meant, I meant on that particular, those particular topics.
I, oh, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, as you go, I just wanted us to respond to each, each item.
Well, I think the, what, what. I think that what Patrick has already um, uh, proposed uh, sounds reasonable to me.
Sorry, I wasn't, I was still on mute. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm good as well. If, if Brad, if you don't have anything else. Pat, you can keep going.
Yeah, Pat, you can continue.
I, and then some of the other things that just clean up items. I mean, I, I did note my email today, um. I'd, I'd like to cap it at four stories and have, not have such a big footprint, but if that ship sail, it sail, but I'd still like to. But, you know, if, depending on the planning board, the, the, the four members that are here, if we wanna put that in our letter, we can put it in our letter, if not, we can remove it. Um. Uh, in nine point nine, nine point nine point four, it says. Uh, not less than fifteen units per acre. If we can, I think we should change it to fifteen units per acre, so not less than, could be sixty or fifty, you know what I mean? So I think. I think that um, just so it's predictable and we know what people can do, and the MBTA only requires fifteen units per acre, we might as well do that. And again, that may make form-based code more attractive if somebody gets seventeen, eighteen or twenty.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Mr. Rully added something already about the um. And I just think it needs to be cleaned up a little bit. I said that it um. Um. We wanna use the flex frontage design guidelines for MBTA housing, so we do, we can just adopt those design guidelines, so if it's built under MBTA. In the, in the, in the overlay or it's built under the. Form-based code in the overlay. They may have different components, but they'll have the same, same architectural details and same, no setback requirements and things of that nature. I, I tried to draft something, and I, I, I said, I said, um. Multifamily built under this section should allow for the flex frontage requirements in nine point eight point six point five and the general architectural standards in nine point eight point seven, but. If, if that has to be tweaked, it has to be tweaked. I mean, I think the general idea is we want it to look like the flex frontage buildings. Um, maybe. Shane and Bob could look at that, try to clean that up. Um. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that.
No, I'm good.
And then the, I think the point of disagreement might be um. Just on the MBTA stuff, not on any form-based code stuff. Um, and I understand what Bob's saying that it. It's really not affordable housing because you have to make, you know, more than eighty percent, not less than eighty percent of, I think, I think the way the law reads it says not less than eighty percent of AMI. I agree, that's not true affordable housing, but. It does help us satisfy our SHI requirements, which may. Prevent unwanted developments in the future. So if we can, and it doesn't go against the. Approval of the, of the executive office of housing and urban development, wherever this goes, I, I think that, that projects built. Under the MBTA. Um. Coordinates in the, in the MBTA overlay should have, we should have ten percent or more of the units um, affordable in perpetuity. But that's just something to throw at.
I mean, I would just add to that, and. You know, again, my concern is that it's gonna be. Perceived by. The AG and executive office housing, local communities, the exclusionary housing. Let us uh, reach out to monitors to see. Do they actually monitor properties that are above eighty percent? Because I think. That might. You know, the goal that you're trying to achieve might be wiped out, in fact, if they're not looking at that.
Yeah, and the only, and, and if you look, if you, if you look in the, the law. The beginning of the law has definitions, and it talks about affordable housing, and it says they may be, but don't have to be included in the SHI. And then further down, it defines. What affordable housing, and it says not less than affordable housing, not, not less than eighty percent.
Yeah, my only concern is, I mean, I know you want to, you know. Make sure we stay above the ten percent. I just don't wanna mislead people that. That language, as awkward as it is, may not get us there. I, I would just like to have a conversation with. Get some clarification on whether that's gonna have the intended result that you anticipated to have.
Well, I think if the, if the planning board decides to put that in their recommendation letter, and it doesn't work, or you, or it's different than what we, we think, then you could just mention that at the council meeting.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think it's good to pursue some more clarity, and I think it's definitely worth discussing at council.
Those were my comments. I just, I read through the document again today and just sent those over in anticipation of tonight, so. I don't, I don't know if any other board, anybody else on the board have anything they wanna consider adding as part of our. Amendments or?
Do we wanna touch on the um? Story limit?
I mentioned that, I, and then we, let's discuss it. So, I mean, the, the council did, did five already. I don't know if that vote will change. We can certainly. Put a four-story limit or a different, what if somebody wants a different limit in, in, in our recommendation level, let's, let's talk about it. So what are your thoughts, Michael?
I would recommend four. I mean, I think we're on the same page on that one. Five is. That's just. Too much for Bridgewater.
Oh, well.
I've got feeling that that vote is basically sail pad, as, as the, as the council, you know, came to terms by. Coming to some type of compromise from four, six to meet in the middle at five, so.
Yeah, I mean, but we're, but, but we're reviewing this ordinance like it's a new one, the whole thing's back.
I understand that, but I, 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 you know, my gut feeling is, is we could recommend, we could recommend four, but I think it's gonna end up staying at five.
I mean, I agree with you, Mr. Geller, but I'd rather put it back in their face again and make them vote, let the people see what they choose.
That's, I mean, you're gonna have to vote on it as a. As a board.
Yeah, so.
Right.
So do we wanna keep that in? Do, do we, do we wanna keep that in with the other things that we discussed? Mr., Mr. Um. Mr. Haley, because I think Michael and I are comfortable with it, but if you, if, if it's a tie, we'll just probably kick it out, right?
I don't, I wouldn't. Change it.
You'd leave it at four? You'd, you'd leave our recommendation at four, or you'd leave it at five?
Five. But, and, and then my. So if I'm putting. Cars under it. If I wanna get four and a half with cars under it, can I do that? You know, I'd need five to, to get that done. That's, that's what's sticking in my mind, so I'm stay with five.
Now we're talking underground parking downtown.
So, so. So we're two to two on that, so I guess we probably just have to scrap it, Michael, right? I mean, there's no. Majority.
I mean, I actually don't know what ties work. I don't think we've ever had one, so.
Here, here's.
I wouldn't give up on it, though, myself.
I, I mean, for what it's worth, I think it, it's perfectly feasible just to keep it in your recommendation. Um, I was somebody who abstained from the vote in that council vote because I did not feel we should have been in that position to vote at that time on one element. Of this ordinance without all this discussion or. Or a full discussion around um, the planning board's recommendations, so. Um, I say keep it for now and note it, it's a tie vote and. Council can address.
Mr. Haley, what if we did a four stories with an exception for underground parking?
Not underground parking, it's podium parking.
Well, point of order, Pat, just quickly, just because. There, there's some procedural stuff that I, I probably should weigh in on. So a tie is a failure, so that doesn't go in the recommendation, so. Uh, you, it has to be a majority vote. If it's not a majority vote, it doesn't go in. Obviously, as you know, the planning board's recommendation is just whether or not. They agree with the form-based code or not. While I, I completely understand the recommendations. You should vote on them one by one, but as you know, they're kind of somewhat superfluous because. The, the fact of the matter is, the vote that the subcommittee of the council and that the planning board should be taking is just merely. Do they recommend it or do they not, right? So I'm, I'm perfectly fine with you guys doing it that way, but. Any recommendation that doesn't pass by a majority vote, that is a recommendation outside of yes or no. Uh, doesn't go into any recommendation given to the council just by rules of parliamentary procedure.
All right, that, yeah, and I already, I crossed it out already, so.
Okay.
I play lawyer on the side.
I just, I, I figured I, I was sitting here, I heard you guys talking procedural, so I may as well have weighed in.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
So, really, just uh, for, for my information, what uh, the parking type you just described, not familiar with that term, could you explain it to me?
So podium parking is that the ground level. At elevation would have parking, the building is built on a podium, so on stilts for lack of another word, so it's considered. So it's considered five stories because the first level, the ground level was parking. The four stories above that could either be office or, or residential.
Okay, good. Yeah, I've seen those in Boston. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
I think Mansfield's got a lot of those.
All right, so, so besides, I mean, we, we seem to be in agreement with all of them except for the height, which I scratched, scratched out. Do we have anything else on the planning board side we'd like to discuss for amendments if we do vote to? Move this to the um, council with favorable recommendation?
I'm, I'm good with what was discussed other than obviously the, the stories.
Mister Geller? Oh, so am I. And, and even with Mister Rully finding out about that ten percent that you discussed earlier. All right, so it's, it's basically, basically what we have is to modify the approval process in the CBDR. Um, to allow, require site plan for MBTA projects. To change the, not less than fifteen units per acre to fifteen. To clean up the flex zone language, deflects frontage requirements and figure out what that needs to be there and to explore having ten uh. Ten percent of units affordable in projects of ten units or more. Is that where we landed?
Yep.
Anything else you want to add?
I mean, I've spoken enough tonight. I think I've taken enough of everyone's time, but uh. I think these are good amendments, but I still think the uh, the bill as a whole is bad. I mean. Cause I've lived in this town my whole life. I know change is inevitable. Um, I, I live in the same house I grew up in. When I grew up, there was, we were surrounded by farms. Uh. Old Farm Road right across me. It used to be the old M off property, cows, as far as the I can see, peacocks, which was a weird one, but uh. We have to make changes. I understand that. This is too much, too fast, too big at one time. I gotta be honest with you. If, if this goes through. The way it is. I don't know if this can be my town anymore. You know, it's. I don't think that's going to be Bridgewater when this passes. So I know I'm going to lose this vote, but I would encourage everyone to vote no on the recommendation.
Yeah, Michael, and I, you know, I agree, it's a lot. It's a big change. I don't like parts of it. Um, I think the reason we, we've worked so hard to try to amend it is to make it better. And I think, you know, although the process is messy, I think it's, it, it works. Um. And I would hope that if it isn't, if it starts off as to what wasn't intended, I mean, any council can file a zoning change to amend it. I can also say.
Pass something that I think needs to be amended later.
The other thing, the other thing too is we already allow eighteen to twenty-six units per acre downtown. With, with commercial on the first floor. And we haven't seen any development. And I think, I think downtown parts of it look worse than ever. And I think that we need, we need to try something different.
I mean, there's not a, uh, there's not a commercial uh, issue with. That we don't have into commercial crisis, got a residential crisis. Uh, to the point where, I mean, the governor, what was that last month with the uh, commercial conversion? That they're doing to get the commercials to a commercial property, be quickly transferred or convert over to residential. So we've got a lot of that statewide, nationwide, as we all know, right? So I think this is uh, you know, pumping the brakes a little bit on it to, to some of Patrick's points. Uh, Michael. You know, been here since seventy-two, though I don't remember the first five years or so. It's pretty young. Uh. I remember the, the first town census that I read, there were eighty-seven hundred people in town. Um, good, different town, different nation, different state, different uh, way of life that we're all looking at. And uh, the third most densely populated area in the nation, so. It's un, it's unfortunate, but this, this plus is a minus to it. And I, I kind of look at the brighter side of it myself.
Michael, Michael, I also think too, though, is, is that with these amendments, right? If it's in the CBD, if it's in the CBDS. Planning board has both site, uh, site planning and potentially special permanent authority, right? If it's in the CBDR, we just added that the planning board is part of the review process and. We'll be aware of what's going on before it's approved. We can make comments. If we see, you know, if there's a different C E D director or different staff and we see blatant disregard for the checklist, we can make comments, we can talk to counselors. And the MBTA stuff, I think, you know, if we make the form based code more attractive. Then that'll be the way people will develop. And that's why I'd like to see some of these things added to that MBTA language. So I mean, I agree with you. I want to keep it quaint, but I want it to be quaint, really nice, you know? And I think some of these design standards are gonna, are gonna do that.
I think there's good and bad. I think it's, obviously I think it's mostly bad, but uh. I mean, it is what it is, you know? I know the world's gonna go south.
All right, so do we? Suzie, do you want us to move forward with the recommendation based on these amendments I just discussed first? Or do you guys want to go first?
Uh, sure. Uh, well, actually, I guess my question here is. Do you mean like our recommendations too?
Well, no, I just, I just walked through what the planning board is gonna add to their letter as amendments.
Yeah.
And then, and then we'll decide if we vote to recommend or vote to deny.
Yes, please go ahead and vote to recommend or deny.
Okay, so. We talked about a number of amendments. Um, we kicked out the one with the more than uh, four stories because that lost. Um, is there a motion to either approve, approve with the conditions we discussed? But I, I shouldn't say approve. I should say, is there a motion to recommend, to not recommend or recommend with the? Proposed amendments? I'm with your motion to recommend the uh. The zoning ordinance with the recommendations that we spoke about.
I'll second that, Steve.
All right, just, just for clarity though, everything we discussed except for the height, correct? Correct.
Correct.
Right. So we have a motion on second to discussion. Michael, anything you want to add?
Uh, I'll note I approve the amendments.
You do approve the amendments?
I, I approve the amendments, but uh, but no on the recommendation overall, obviously.
Okay. All right, um, so, so the way you did the motion though, Mister Geller, was not to approve the amendments, it was to approve the ordinance with the amendments, correct? So doing one vote. Correct. I keep saying approved. You want to do it as, you want to do.
I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't Attorney Rollin said we had to approve the amendments one by one? I just want to make sure we do it right. I believe Jason said something about that.
Well, we walked through them and the only one we voted no on, right?
Yeah, were you? I wa, I wasn't listening the whole entire time. I came in when you guys started talking about the possible vote, but um. I, I think, didn't, didn't you go by each one?
We went, we went, we went by each one and the only one we.
So then all, all you have to do is, is vote, like you said, there's already a motion on the floor to vote with the recommended admin, uh. Amendments, take the vote and you're good to go.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
So Mister Haley?
Yes.
Mister Geller? Yes. Mister McDonald?
No.
Okay, I'm a yes. All right, thank you. Suzie?
Okay, CD committee. Any um, comments, deliberations, reactions to uh, what was just previously discussed?
Uh, Brad, would you care to kick it off?
You can tell you.
All right.
And coughing.
I appreciate the um. All the input and comments and questions from uh, members of the planning board tonight, as well, of course. The input we received from the public. I think that. The amendments that have been uh, just adopted by the planning board uh, are very reasonable. I think that these are. Modifications that improve the proposed ordinance. Uh, I've, I'm very favorable to them. I don't have any other suggestions I would like to put forward. Um, in my own opinion, I am, I am certainly willing to support the um, motion for a recommendation with the amendments that have been discussed.
I'd second that.
Great. So we've got a motion. So we've got a motion on the floor. I'll do a roll call of, Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mister McKinnon?
Yes.
I too am a yes, so thank you. Um. I would like to make just a, hopefully brief comment, since there are still also members of the public on the phone as well. Mister McDonald, I actually also direct this to you as well. I can appreciate a lot of the sentiments around small town farming community. Um. Even though I did not grow up here, most people would never know that I grew up in a town of ten thousand people, very much like Bridgewater. It is, it was and is still a farming community. I literally grew up playing on this farm. And um, but what I can also share is that my tiny town that I grew up in. Also, I, and I'm not sure, it might be form based code, I'm not sure, but there's a uniformity to everything. And there is a pleasant style to a development that happened. I want to say like maybe. Like, I want to say like maybe ten years ago. Um, and it has, you know, it's, it's mixed use. And so there's an Ace Hardware store, there's a grocery store as, as an anchor store, there's a bunch of mom and pop stores. There is actually a very highly trafficked and very, very shiny Salvation Army that literally draws in people from miles away. Interestingly enough that I also learned. But what's also great is that farm that I grew up on is still very much there. And the neighborhood that I grew up in is still very much intact. And I think that that's what we're trying to do here as well. I don't, you know, I really hope that folks don't think that this is some. Nefarious plot and that the council is just trying to make decisions for everyone without listening or hearing. I think we just have had the advantage of having a little bit more conversations around what we can really envision, right? But I do appreciate that folks have been asking and probing and asking amazingly smart questions. Um, but. Every time I go back to my hometown, I keep going like, oh man, we could do this, right? And it hasn't overgrown. And, and, and actually, my town didn't even have um, a high school and it did finally build one because it was. Growing in terms of families, but what they weren't doing was growing the commercial base. So once they did do this development. I thought it was really smart and I think the town is thriving in very different ways while still keeping so much of its charm, so many small business, businesses as well. So I just leave that with you that. You know, I know that there's a lot of concern around that, but I think that we all share a similar vision for an incredibly beautiful Bridgewater. That can still keep the integrity of our traditions and the roots, literally, figuratively, right? But then yet still bring services that can really support so many of us. So thank you for listening. Uh, I know this has been incredibly long meeting, so I just appreciate that and wanted to share those, those comments. All right, Pat, what do we do next?
I appreciate that.
You, you guys are good. We still have a planning board meeting now.
Can the C D dip out?
I'd make a motion to close the C D section.
So moved.
I would second that.
Okay, roll call, Mister McKinnon.
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Yes, from me. Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Night, guys. Thank you so much. Can I ask a quick question uh, from Mister Rully? Um, who is recording notes from this meeting, from that hearing?
Well.
Well, well, we're on.
I'll, I'll write the letter for the planning board.
Yeah, the, the meeting will be, the meeting will be on YouTube as well. So we have, we have, we take notes as we do the meeting. But we also recap, we'll recap the meeting tomorrow.
Okay, I appreciate that. One thing I want to request and make very, very clear is I would really appreciate. Details in those note, and I know Pat's gonna write that up, but I would also appreciate. That being reflected in whatever next version that y'all produce and make sure that it gets to the, the cosponsors of this ordinance. So that we can see things before anything is posted. Cause we have had some back and forth on versions and some of the feedback and, and you know, Mister Driscoll has. Mentioned a couple of times that we've had conversations, some things have not been updated, some things have. So. I would just appreciate the courtesy of making sure that the cosponsors of this ordinance see any future edits redlined before anything is posted again.
Well, we won't be posting anything bef, we don't have time to post anything before the council meeting. Uh, we can provide uh, you and the members in advance of the changes that were discussed tonight. As a redline, but we won't have time to post it before the meeting and just. That all the changes that we made today are doable under the legal ad that was. Published for this meeting. So we will make sure that you get those redlines in advance of Tuesday's meeting.
Great, thank you. All right, thanks again, folks. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
And Suzie, I, I can, I sent you, so, so I sent, when I, before I. Shared these comments tonight, I sent you Bob and Shane a copy of what I was gonna say tonight anyway. So you, you have basically all the things that I am gonna put in the letter. I just need to cross out the height one and clean up a couple.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, thanks again.
Good night.
Now.
I don't know if I threw out my agenda because I was hoping the meeting was over, but I lost it.
Uh, next uh, thing is New Orleans Park.
Yeah, we have a planning board discussion regarding um, an open session regarding the uh, the lawsuit, um, Weldon, town of Bridgewater. Um. We have the town, the town attorney here waiting patiently.
Yes. So uh, as you all know, the last we discussed this was in executive session. Uh, we had discussed a few tweaks um, to the documents that had come before you, you all. Uh, and based on those tweaks and your recommendations, uh, I did submit documents back to. Two of the parties in the matter who were seeking settlement. Uh, they agreed with our adjustments to the records. Um, in the documents, those adjust, those adjustments are reflected in the final versions, which I submitted. Um, to you all uh, for your review, but essentially um, same terms and conditions that we discussed before. Uh, with the only kind of difference being that the restriction is a bit more extensive. As recommended by you all um, in asks that I go back with. Uh, all of those recommendations that you all made were adopted. Um, there was also a clear indication in the release. Um, that will be signed by all parties as a settlement agreement that essentially this in no way. Adjust or alters or modifies the New Orleans Park subdivision and all it really is intended to do. Is to enforce the twenty-six point one for acres uh, that used to be. Called parcel A as being non-buildable. Um, so everything that you all asked. Um, has been accommodated in those documents. Uh, so really, all I'm asking at this point is for you all to take a vote. Uh, to approve uh, those documents and to sign off. The only other documents you would have received. Are a release of the eighty-one U covenant only related to. Those portions of these two parcels that were encompassed by that larger parcel A. Um, so that release of the eighty-one U covenant has nothing to do with releasing it. Or releasing that covenant overall from the subdivision. It only has to do with the release. Uh, as it relates to those portions of lots that we're now getting what I think are, are far more extensive and better. Uh, restrictions uh, on that land. So that's, that's where we're left. I think it was the result you all had requested. So I'm hoping that you vote favorably and. Uh, I can have Shane arrange for each of you to sign the agreements tomorrow if I do get a favorable vote and. I can continue to move this case forward. The developer has not been released from the case. And none of these documents have anything to do with the developer. So that's another story for another day, but. This only has to do with the two lots uh, and their rear portions of their lots being non-buildable.
So can I just ask two quick questions?
Yep. Yep.
So there's one scribbles I wrote. So we talked about motorized vehicles. Like eight, like ATVs, like bulldozers, things like, things like that, just to cover everything. And typically, in a typically in a zoning, in a conservation easement, it says motorized vehicles.
Yep.
Um, we just left the the eyes off. It says motor vehicles. I don't think we're worried about anybody driving cars through the woods. I think worried about like. So I just, can we change motor to motorized?
I mean, I'm I'm sure I can ask them about that. I I suspect that a motor vehicle could conceivably. We don't have a definition section, could conceivably be any vehicle with a motor. Um, but certainly I could ask them. I don't, I don't think they'll object to it.
Yeah, if we could, if we could change that, I think that would, just because that covers everything. You know, the registry looks at motorized vehicles and motor vehicles two different ways, so it just, just to cover the, just to cover the fact that. It it covers everything back there.
He- here's the good news. The registry doesn't enforce this restriction we do, so if we, if it says motor vehicle and the conservation commission says. Hey, that's a vehicle with a motor, or Steve Solari says, hey, that's a motor on a vehicle, then then we're fine, but I will certainly.
Yeah, I mean, if 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 they're open to changing it, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I'll certainly, I'll certainly run that, but I don't, I don't think that's gonna be it.
In the eighty-one U, are we gonna sign it before they record the restriction?
You're gonna prob, I want you guys to sign everything, and then I'm gonna hold things in escrow. Until I've gotten the releases that I need from them, right? And I've also, uh, I also have a stipulation of dismissal filed with the court. To dismiss certain portions of the lawsuit uh that are pending um against us. So I I think there there's a variety of things that will happen simultaneously, but no one's getting anything. Uh, until kind of we've exchanged everything and everyone's signed off. Alright.
Attorney Rollins, I don't know if this is an appropriate question outside of executive session, but uh. Do you think uh the case going forwards now with just the developer is gonna go in our favor, or how do you, how do you see that working out?
I think we should, I think that's an executive session.
Okay, I figured.
Yep, which I I will, I will absolutely come back. Uh, once we resolve this, I'm thinking, uh, we were supposed to have a hearing with them. April twenty-fifth, which still will probably go forward forward with the developer, so I may come back. After that hearing, just to kind of give you guys an update and discuss, you know, how things look. Um, now that they're out of the case and we're moving forward with the developer, if that, if that's helpful.
Okay, yeah, excellent. I'm sorry you had to wait so long tonight.
No, it was very short. Yeah, yeah, right. No worries. So I I'd say Pat.
So Jason, do you, do you want a motion on?
Yeah, a motion, yeah, a motion to um. Approve the uh agreements that you've been provided. And then I think Shane, you you can put the agreements, you know, as part of the record. Um, and I think that should be sufficient. You you all then will just have to arrange with Shane. I'll have him print everything out. You guys are just gonna have to go by and sign them all.
Yeah, I just, we do have a site visit on Friday, Jason, so I can get a a high percentage of the board to sign that day.
That's perfect. That sounds great.
Okay, you'll just bring.
Do you want, do you want to change that document to 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 see if you can get that word changed prior to, or that can be changed after, or what?
Uh, I say vote to approve what we have. If they're willing to change that, I don't think it changes the nature of anything. And so I think I just get them to change it and then we move forward.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, I I guess I'll make a motion to uh approve the uh. Sorry, this is a new one for me. What would the motion be, Jason?
You could say, uh, you're gonna make a motion to approve the settlement and accompanying documents. Uh, provided to the board relative to the Weldon trust matter. I think that that'll suffice.
Okay, uh, so moved.
There you go.
We have a motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Haley. I'll take the role, Mr. Geller.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Haley?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, Attorney Rollins.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jason.
Mr. O'Brien, do, did you get us all the minutes, third, the tenth, the seventeenth?
Uh, I I did not. I'm still in the process of reviewing those minutes. Um, those are meetings that I wasn't in attendance to, but I'm also rewatching them, so I'm just, I'll I'll have.
No, I I didn't, I didn't know if I missed them, because I I didn't see them, so.
Nope, on me.
So we have the um eight fifteen Bedford Street site visit on April fifth?
Yep, uh, just to kind of go over the planner's report and just kind of reiterate it. Uh, I posted it last Thursday and sent it to you guys as well as. Uh, the applicants, uh, the applicants have made some points in terms of some liability issues regarding. Um, the site visit, um, those liability issues are noted within the agenda. Um, so it is publicly posted on the town's website. Um, just a, just a nice reminder, just there's no deliberations as part of. Uh, this process by any board members, uh, any members of the public providing comment. Um, but I believe the engineer will be there to um answer some, some questions, but no recommendations of any kind, so I'll be there. Um, Shristi uh will be there as well. Um, but it is posted, so we are all good for Friday at twelve, so I I appreciate everyone's feedback and and the timing on turning that around to be available at that date.
Do we, do we notify the abuddhas on the abuddhas list of that, or is that up to them to check in?
It's up to them. They have to do their due diligence at that matter. Um. They're they're notified of the first meeting, they attend the first meeting, they listen that the site visit is gonna be scheduled, and they just be attentive. I'm sure there'll be people there. Same thing happened when we did the Claremont site visit. No one was really notified.
Now, is that? Is that in like the town code? Is that a planning board thing, or?
That's just, is, it's just typical process. We don't, we don't, the job of the site visit isn't to notify the public. Is the responsibility of the board to go see the site. So I'm, I'm reiterating this at this meeting. So as as a kind of a courtesy to those watching um at this point still. Or just in general, but if you, if you're aware of anyone that is, you know, curious, I I've I've had multiple phone calls today. Uh, people interested about the site visit, I've let them know. Um, but yeah, if people are interested. Town calendar on the front page is always good to see what's going on in town. Uh, same thing mentioned with Mr. Moore and Bob's response to the downtown committee.
Okay, yeah, thank, I was just curious about how that.
Sure thing.
And I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to write the letter to the council for review by everybody again, because I can't send it directly to you guys. I'll um. I'll have, I'll send it to Mr. O'Brien for review based to make sure we captured everything that we talked about for amendments. And then once him and I finalize it, we'll send it out to the board. Before it's, you know, and then we'll submit it, because we we have a pretty tight timeline. I think the council meets Tuesday.
Right, so if you can come in, Pat, if you want, we want to review it quickly, Pat, as well as if you can come in to. We've received uh Mylars for um. Oh, God, what's the name? I my brain's. The the project that we approved on North Street, uh, three-lot subdivision that um I afraid he did.
Alright, yeah, alright.
So we have the, we have the Mylar and the uh plans to be endorsed.
Yeah, so I'll try, I'll I'll drop something tomorrow that you that you can review and then. You and I can work on it. We'll get it out to the board and then forward it to the council Friday.
Sounds good to me.
But we have to speak to the council by Monday, by Tuesday, so. I'll get it done tomorrow.
Yeah, let's just get it done as quickly as possible.
Alright, anything from you or Bob for planner's reports? So anybody else?
Um, nothing at this time that I can think of.
No Ray for a tree report?
Oh, Ray would have been. No, I I, yeah, I think, no, no, I don't have any updates, I think, from Ray. I haven't heard from Ray um since last meeting, but um. If I have, if I hear anything from Ray, um, I'll forward it along to you guys.
Okay, so do we motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. McDonald, we have a second. Mr. Geller, any discussion? Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, sir.
I'm a yes.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everyone.